Sound check in the audience here, it's okay.
Some snacks?
I always have to have snacks.
Did you bring us?
Listen, you guys.
Be careful with your feet, we have outlets there.
Sue Weaver, budget wise, would you guys want to meet? Start out on the seventh and the eighth, and if it continues, go continuing, or would you like to meet before?
Some like reading.
You be so tired of signing things?
I don't have fifteen letters in the last name, right?
Amongst the fifty emails that were sent today. Add that resignation letter here before the public hearing. And I'll ask public comments not related to the win for that, and then we go to the public hearing. Is that all right, Weaver? So we're gonna add the resignation to the agenda, and then what, some public comments related to the win?
Sure. Here's the chairman, do what you gotta do.
Well, I just wanna keep you in the loop. Have a gavel.
Well, good evening, everybody.
Thank you, are you ready, Jeff?
All right, well, good evening and welcome. I've long told Commissioner Richardson that night meetings would be a much more popular meeting, and so I guess with this end of one, we'll go with that, but no, thank you all for being here. We have a little bit of business to take care of from this morning's meeting, we'll get that out of the way right away. And then we'll go to the public hearing for the Rail Tie Wind Project. Just some housekeeping, if you would, we'd like to keep those comments to three minutes and under. As you get towards two minutes and thirty seconds, I'll just raise my hand, and that means you have thirty seconds left. If you would wrap up your comments at that point, that would be appreciative. Also, I know this is a passionate topic for many people on both sides. So if you would just address the chair, we'll recognize you, and away we go. We'll take three or four from the in-person audience, and then we'll go online. And somebody back there will help me with the online people, that would be great. And then just at the end, if you just remember that we're all in Albany County together, and that although you might disagree and disagree immediately with the person speaking in front of you, please keep your comments about that yourselves, no booing or hissing or applauding, that's, that would be helpful. We will stay here as long as it takes, and so we want everybody to have the opportunity to be heard. With that said, Jennifer, could you add that to the agenda from this morning?
Yes, Commissioner, go, sorry, if we could add an agenda item this evening to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Tim Stamp from the Laramie Regional Airport Board, and direct the clerk to work with the city to advertise the vacancy in that position.
Thank you, and I would like to add, that would be forty-two A, forty-two B would be public comments that aren't related to the rail tie. I know there are a couple of those, and then after that, it'll be rail tie for the rest of the evening. So be that as it may. Forty-two A, the resignation of Mr. Stamp from the airport board, please.
Thank you, so this afternoon, Mr. Stamp turned in a written resignation to Jackie Gonzalez, our county clerk, which is effective immediately. And with that, the most current version of the airport board bylaws require that it's a joint appointment from the city and county to fill any vacant spots on the board, which is why we'd like to ask that Jackie and her staff work with the city clerk's office to advertise that as necessary for that joint appointment.
Thank you, Jennifer Commissioners, do you have any questions, comments? I had entered a motion for forty-two A, the resignation of Tim Stamp.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resignation of Tim Stamp from the Laramie Regional Airport Board and direct the clerk to advertise the position, the vacancy.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing that all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same side, that motion carries. Forty-two B, public comments not related to the rail tie wind project, are there any public comments not related to the rail tie? So Fire District Sheriff's Office, any of that stuff? Okay. All right. Seeing none of those, we will start the public hearing for the Rail Tie Wind Project, W E C S dash zero one dash two one. My thoughts on this is we'll have Mr. David Gertz, the planning, the Albany County Planner, introduce the topic. The Connect Gen folks will have the ability to make their presentation, and then after that, we'll take public comment. Three minutes, if you would, for as long as it takes, so David, please, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so this is obviously the wind energy conversion systems application. Mr. Chair, are you wanting me to give the staff report at this time, or are we just introducing the topic and then going forward that way?
You can give us the staff report real quick.
Staff report?
Yeah, you don't have to go through too detail, but just the overall, the overarching themes on that.
Sure, 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 okay. This is just, yeah, not a problem, we can do that. I'm gonna stand up, just see me.
And maybe just focusing on the timeline would be really helpful, the timeline of the whole process, so application, this meeting, and then when a final decision has to be made, and then we'll let Connect Gen.
Okay, you don't want the staff report, you just want the timeline?
Yep, just give us the timeline.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Trying to figure this out, okay, so, so at this point, we have the Connect Gen application. It's went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, received a recommendation from that commission, and now it's with the Board of County Commissioners. The Commissioners tonight are fulfilling the requirement to have a public hearing that had to be scheduled between forty-five days and sixty days from the time that the board found that this application was complete, and so that was done a couple of months ago. And today, we are now here, you know, within that time period to have the public hearing. Once the public hearing is complete, then the board has forty-five days to make a decision on the application, so you know, they're allowed to vote on that tonight, or they can vote on that at a latter meeting, so is that sufficient?
That works, that works, and then somebody from Connect Gen, I think I see Amanda there, are you guys interested in making a presentation here?
Sure, I'm Amanda McDonald, I'm the project manager for the Rail Tie Wind Project. Sorry, I think I got some maybe slightly different information about the order of the events tonight, so I was planning to speak after public comment, but can do a little intro now. So with me today, I have a number of the Connect Gen team, we've got John Cuba with Director of Environmental Affairs, Mark Lawler, who's the VP of Development, and Randy Patterson, who's an environmental associate. And then we also have a couple of members of the Tetra Tech Team who supported putting together the permit application, so that's Amy Sherman, and also Kevin Fowler, who's joining us virtually. And we are all here today to answer any questions that this board has about the permit application. I mean, first off, just wanna thank you all for the many, many hours you've put into this project, you know, not just over the past few months reviewing the application, but also over the past year or two, you know, learning about the project, learning about wind energy, hearing from the public, visiting the site, really appreciate, you know, all the work you have done. Over the past two and a half years, Connect Gen has been working to responsibly develop the Rail Tie Wind Project in order to, you know, maximize the positive impacts and to minimize and mitigate any negative impacts. And this includes, you know, over one hundred environmental protection measures that we've committed to. This includes our plans to use, you know, the latest available technology to mitigate impacts such as nighttime lighting and wildlife impacts. Includes the outreach we've been doing to local businesses to help maximize the number of local people who will work on this project. And also, you know, our direct commitments to the community through our contributions and partnerships with local organizations, and we're definitely striving to be, to set a gold standard for wind development in Wyoming. And over the development process, we've been very encouraged by the support we've received from a wide-ranging coalition of, you know, individuals and organizations who support this project because they care about economic development and about the environment, and they, they want what's best for Albany County and for Wyoming overall. So, I mean, I want to use your time well, and if there's any topics of the project that you specifically would like to discuss further, or any questions you may have, I'm ready and available to answer them. Or we can wait to see what comes up during public comment, if there's anything that you would like me to address after that, but really, I'll do what you would like to discuss.
Thank you, Amanda, I appreciate it. We'll save the questions, I guess, to the end, and away we go with public comment unless somebody else on your team would like to talk. Okay, fair enough. Who would like to speak first, if you would just go to the lectern, yes, the gentleman here?
Would it be possible for me to speak without a mask?
Sure, you can.
My name is, well, first of all, thank you Commissioners for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kevin Kildy, I'm a retired professor of mechanical engineering from the University of Wyoming, I also taught for a time at, at Washington State University. I spent twenty-three years in industrial consulting. I am just gonna make a couple of quick comments tonight because I know we're limited to three minutes, so I view the E I S for this project as being deficient in some ways, and I would just like to cite two examples that show why that, so first of all, in the acoustics end of the report, there's a great deal of reliance on I S O ninety-six thirteen dash two, which is a standard for calculate, or estimating or calculating the acoustic impacts of not wind turbines per se, but general noise-producing machinery. That standard is from the mid nineteen nineties, it's rather dated, wind turbines are perhaps as large as ten times that size that they were, but let's just talk about what I S O ninety-six thirteen dash two can do, it is meant for wind speeds between one and five meters per second and at heights of three to eleven meters. It assumes favorable meteorology for the propagation of sound, that there is a ground-based inversion. It does say in clause eight that the effects of meteorology are for short distances for sources and receivers close to the ground, don't last long, and they will last for longer distances if the source and the receiver are higher. The case that they don't cover is a very high source and a short receiver, and that's because reflections at the ground can be coherent at that point, and you can get interference between a reflection and the original sound. Under clause nine, the uncertainties, they suggest uncertainties in there that are actually larger than Connect Gen's E I S indicates, they also indicate that this standard was written for sources that are shorter than thirty meters, and that they never considered distances further than a thousand meters from the source. It's not specifically meant for wind turbines, as I mentioned, it includes no effects for reflections. What it does not address, it does not address amplitude modulation, tonal noise, low frequency noise, infrasound. All of those might be important for disturbances to people's sleep and psychology. It doesn't include anything about ground vibrations, it doesn't include anything about coherent ground reflections, that's the, that's the height of this source, and it, it really only considers spherical divergence, not cylindrical divergence, which is important, everyone in here has heard trains in the morning that you can't hear in the afternoon, and that's because in the morning with a strong inversion at the ground surface, you have cylindrical divergence. I was just gonna mention that, what do we do about this? I'm not, since I was a professor of engineering and taught senior design, we have to include adequate margins, what we call factors of safety, or factors of ignorance, if you will, and Connect Gen has only included a two D B factor of safety, if you will, and that's from the manufacturer of the turbine, to use that alone would be the equivalent of only looking at strength of steel on a bridge rather than loading from traffic and wind.
Wrap it up, please.
Sure, I'll wrap it up quickly, let me just mention something about groundwater, that's, that was my second example. And in the groundwater, they talk about transmissivity of the soils, but characterize a, an aquifer, you need both transmissivity and storage coefficient, some, some method of determining how much water is released for a unit decline in, in pumping or in draining for the, the construction of foundations. There's nothing in there that tells us those two constants that are really needed to, to be able to figure out the impact of de-watering a foundation site, so I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Next up, we'll take five here, and then I think we had here, Art, you bet, please.
Thank you, sir, my name is Art Siegel, I've been a resident, resident of Albany County now for fifteen years. My background is chemical engineering and business, and for over twenty years, CEO of a two-hundred-million-dollar-a-year company. I've served on boards for the last forty years, I guess. My, my training and my experience takes me immediately, when I, when I come up against a problem, to analyze the financial aspects and the values that are involved. I support this proposed project. I've witnessed the economic struggles of our county that, that our county leadership had to go through to deal with due to our, our poor tax base as a county. I have studied, considered the many arguments for and against this project. I believe the benefits of this project far outweigh the arguments against it. In fact, I would say that rail tie is, is a sort of opportunity that comes along once in a generation, and I would hope that you as Commissioners would approve it and let us move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel, thank you. The gentleman in the red, I believe, was up next. And please state your name, you don't have to tell us you're from Albany County, unless you're not from Albany County, that would be great to know.
Good evening, Luke Hawkins, Chairman Albany County Fire District One, here to say that we're not going to be supporting or in favor of or against the wind project as a district, we're taking no stance on that, our stance is for fire protection, and we ask that you consider those aspects for that, I'm also here just to answer any questions that you may have and concerns with fire protection for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, appreciate it, and here, front, and then we'll go to the lady back there.
I am Annalee Ames-Ferolich, came up here from Denver. July of twenty seventeen, there were a large group of railroad historians and government officials who were celebrating the dedication of the Ames Monument as a national historic landmark. I was there because it had been my pleasure to be part of the team that had worked with SHIPO to gather the needed information that led in twenty sixteen to the monument's designation by the United States National Park Service as a landmark. So it is a relatively new landmark, and now the sixty-foot-high pyramid is about to have its grandeur obliterated as it is encircled by six-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall windmills. Not only are they very tall, but they grab attention by moving and making noises much of the time. The Board of the Union Pacific Railroad had the monument built at the high point of the entire transcontinental railroad to show its significance in the story of the men whose work made the building of the railroad and the act of tying the country together possible. It is on a hill above the old town of Sherman and was meant to stand out. The monument should not have to compete with the windmills. Just imagine what it would be like if windmills were to be built around the Statue of Liberty. The Statue of Liberty was designated a monument by the same group, the United States Park Service. This situation with the Ames Monument could set a precedent for what happens to landmarks and monuments around the whole country. It would be better if a much greater effort were made to mitigate the negative effects on the view shed. The integrity of the Ames Monument is inextricably bound up in how it is viewed. And they do, they would do damage to the way that it is perceived. And I was going to say that windmills would not damage the monument physically, but I have learned that there is the possibility that blasting to settle the windmills could set up reverberations through the granite substrata and cause damage to the monument. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, yes, lady. So that'll be the fifth, and then we'll go online here, so go ahead, please.
My name is Kimber Stinson, and I'm fifteen years old, and I'm a sophomore at Laramie High School, I'm an active member of the Snowy Range FFA, and because of, I lived two miles off of Pumpkin Vine Road and raised sheep and goats, I decided to look into wind turbines for an FFA speech. As I did my research, I learned that it's so much more than getting money and using Wyoming wind, there's actually many consequences that come when we put work, that we put wind to work at such a massive scale. We already know that turbines are responsible for the death of many birds, including raptors and eagles. Millions of bats are killed per year from spinning into, flying into the spinning blades. Their lifeless bodies show us hard evidence, but what's the evidence that these turbines are affecting other animals or even people? An investigation was done by Gatehouse Media, they identified four hundred different families who had publicly complained about shadow flicker, noise, low-frequency vibration, and health problems. Dr. Jay Tibbetts had been studying cases of blurred vision of residents living near two different wind farms in Wisconsin. He came to the conclusion that the pressure pulseting off of the turbines was vibrating the vitreous humor of the eyeball, thus causing blurred vision and lost depth perception. Dr. Alex Saul at Washington University Medical School, Department of Auto Laryngology, has explained how these inaudible sounds are causing these adverse health symptoms seen by those living near wind turbine noise. There's an anatomical pathway from There's an anatomical pathway from the outer hair cells through the brainstem, allowing the infrasound to reach the brain, thus causing a variety of sensations including pulsation, annoyance, stress, panic, ear pressure of fullness, vertigo, tinnitus, nausea, and general discomfort. Other symptoms may include memory loss, sleep deprivation, heart arrhythmias, or blood pressure elevation. As the turbine size increases, the noise in the infrasound range also increases. But the land animals are also being infected. In Taiwan, a goat farmer blamed the death of 400 goats after the startup of 22 turbines. His case was supported by the Ministry of Agriculture. In Ontario, a cattle farm was driven out of business because of the health concerns of their cattle. Their cattle exhibited aggressive and erratic behaviors, including kicking the calf, prolapsed birth, stillbirth deformities, high cases of mastitis, and low fertility rate. Around the same area, a goat farmer had reported that all 20 of his nanny goats had either miscarried or had kids die hours within birth. After the startup of only 88 turbines, a Wisconsin farmer had reported that one-third of his chickens died and the other displayed deformities at birth. Some missing eyes, eyes sticking out of their head, deformed heads, malformed legs, and twisted beaks. The United States Army Aeromedical Research Laboratory did a study to see how amplitude and vibration affected developing embryos. The study goes into great depth on how these inaudible sounds are causing these type of deformities and diminishing hatching rates. A study was done in London on health effects of badgers. They, they studied nine badgers living less than 1 kilometer away versus a control group of 16 badgers living less than 10 kilometers away. They measured the cortisol levels in the badger's hair and found that the badgers living closer were 264% higher than those living further away. This means that they were physiologically stressed. In Denmark, a mink farm had reported 1,600 stillborn mink a month after the startup of these turbines. If this is happening to these animals and people, what's going to happen to our elk, deer, antelope, cattle, sheep, goats, and other wildlife, or even our neighbors? Now, the wind companies know about these problems. Their contracts contain clauses acknowledging these effects, but they still deny having any effect on human health. Even as complaints mount nationwide, they're buying out farms and settling on dollar amount in exchange for their silence. Now, these animals, they can't read propaganda, they can't scroll through social media, and they can't listen to the radio or TV. So it cannot be said that these pathologies were caused by anti-wind campaigns or the nocebo effect. Now, keep in mind, all these turbines that I have mentioned are nowhere near the size of the turbines proposed for the rail tie project. Now, I start to wonder, have we asked enough questions? Has all the information been laid on the table? Or do our answers not hold their weight in value when the dollar sign is involved? Or do we just expect my generation to deal with the consequences in the future? Thank you.
Remember, please, would you hold your applause or, or any other form of emotion? Thank you so much. I, I'm impressed with Ms. Stinson's ability too. So, Mr. Coffey, I have you online. I have you first up. Go on ahead. The floor is yours. Three minutes, Dave.
Honorable Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you today about this. I am a proponent of this project. I believe, as Mr. Siegel said, this is a potentially a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, to help diversify the, the economy in Albany County. It's a, it's a project, I believe, after my own research, the, the Connect Gen has done a, an adequate job of addressing, and they're both their application and their, and their other reports. I'll leave my comments to that. I did want to, after hearing Mr. Kelty's assertion that the, the, the report was, the Connect Gen's report related to the de-watering was insufficient. As a, as an engineer, having been in the field, dealt with these types of de-watering issues related to foundations, this is not something that Connect Gen can adequately address at this point in time. That is a site-specific, foundation-specific type of issue, and there are a number of best management practices that Connect Gen will be required to adhere to related to foundation de-watering. This is a, this is a non-issue at this point in time. I just wanted to bring that comment to your attention. But regardless, I am in, in favor of this. Albany County will benefit greatly and it's, in my opinion, the, the benefits far outweigh the concerns at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Coffey. Mr. Connor Mullen, you're up and on deck, Katrina Cox. Go ahead, Connor. The floor is yours. Three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman, members of the County Commission. Can you hear me all right?
Loud and clear.
All right. My name is Connor Mullen. I live here in Laramie and I'm pleased to be here tonight representing Sierra Club Wyoming, our staff, and nearly 6,000 members and supporters. On behalf of the Wyoming chapter, we are urging the commission to approve the rail tie wind projects permit application. After reviewing the very thorough draft environmental impact statement, we have concluded that the benefits of developing the rail tie wind project would outweigh the relative, relatively limited impacts on an area that has already seen quite a bit of development. We don't want to diminish the fact that the project will have an impact on the appearance of the area because it will look different. But this is not a pristine, undeveloped landscape that we're talking about. We're accustomed in Albany County to seeing other signs of development in the area, including rural subdivisions, limestone mines, highways, and other roads, truck traffic, power lines, railroad tracks, et cetera. And those visual impacts are generally accepted based off of the necessity of what they provide. Renewable energy is a provider and it is now more than ever a necessity, but it's not a provider or a necessity that we can cite or implement haphazardly. So I'd like to thank the commission for creating good, safe regulations that allow for well-sighted projects like this and for doing so without overstepping and unnecessarily hampering wind development. The current regulations will encourage other well-planned projects in the future and will ensure that those projects are carried out in the best, most responsible way. Benefits of increased revenue, jobs, and the opportunity for Albany County to chip in on efforts that reduce our global emissions far outweigh the minimal temporary and visual impacts that the rail tie wind project have on wildlife, aviary populations, and the view. Please support this project by approving the permit. Thank you for your time and for taking public comment today.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. And Katrina, the three minutes, floor is yours. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Katrina Cox. I'm talking to you today to express support for approval of the rail tie project and Connect Gen. The city of Laramie and Albany County and our schools will benefit tremendously from the rail tie wind project. Considering the challenges we are facing as a state, the rail tie wind project presents a unique opportunity to generate substantial new economic development without overburdening our city and county infrastructure. The tax revenues from this project will have a significant impact on our county. And most importantly, the state schools over 35 life year of this project. It'll keep on coming. The tax funds will go a long way to support local infrastructure, public services, and local businesses that are suffering from the budget cuts statewide, when Albany, it is Albany County's oil, gas, and coal, that other counties have realized significant benefits from over the past years. We have watched our neighboring counties to the east and west have tremendous benefits to their local communities and schools. Enabling renewable energy industry to invest in our backyard will show progress and growth that is much needed now and in the foreseeable future. I'm a local business owner and this will benefit the community I serve. The bottom line is that Laramie needs to desert diversify its economy development and rely less on UW and the state for its funding. We are tired of being a welfare county and would like to contribute to our great state. I'm a conservative businesswoman. I believe we have seen the beginning of the potential that wind will bring our state and especially Albany County. I have parented three kids who all play sports for the past 13 years here. Just graduated my last one last weekend. We, as parents, have had to spend hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars to support the school and their programs to manage to make food, travel, and gear possible. For example, do you know that they only receive $12 per day to eat? No one can eat on that. And we're talking about student athletes that need that energy. We pay on average per family $50 to $100 per sport for Walmart warm-up gear. So that goes into the hundreds, if not thousands. And other travel necessities. Connect Gen and along with the rail tie, rail tie project, we will be able to aid our local community, but more importantly, our schools through taxes as well as their generous donations. If you have any questions, I'm in the community. Feel free to give me a call. I thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Next up, Kylie Cox, followed by Reba Epler, and then we'll go back to the room here. So Kylie, the floor is yours.
My name is Kylie Cox and I graduated last Friday from Laramie High School. I will be attending Feather River College to play basketball and majoring in biology. I am speaking tonight to show my support to the rail tie wind project. I recently wrote a paper on wind energy and how it works and what benefit it provides to communities. I also did a lot of research on the effects of windmills and their, I direct, in their direct environment, and I found many inaccurate statements said by Kimber. Overall, compared to solar, nuclear, and coal wind turbines, leave a significantly, significantly less smaller footprints on land. I digress. Wind energy companies such as Connect Gen also help and support the local community. I just graduated last weekend and I hope to see for my younger peers some of the benefits that will be aid this community. My parents had to pay hundreds of dollars over the past four years that school could not afford, such as food for road trips, warmups, and sports supplies, the money that will be generated from this project, and I hope to see my classmates reap the benefits of that I did not. Wind is the future of clean energy and we are so lucky to have one of the greatest wind sources in the United States. I am passionate about our community and having a place to come back to, to come back to after I graduate. If we embrace opportunities like this, when they fall in our laps, where, where we will be here for the next 15 to 20 years. Wind energy offers so many advantages, which explains why it is the fastest-growing energy source in the world. Wind power is cost-effective. It is very exciting that Connection is bringing their knowledge and years of experience to develop the, and launch this project. Wind energy is the future and we need to jump onto the progress and tap opportunities by companies that want to develop wind in Wyoming and even better Laramie and Albany County. The energy and climate debates seem to have no end, but what is not debatable is the economic benefits that wind energy brings into a community and the state funds. Laramie is a poor county and diversifying our economic base is important. If everyone would just focus on the goods and work together to mitigate the negatives, this is a win-win for everybody. But like so many issues in our nations, everyone chooses to fight and argue about it. If we go out there and you won't stay long because it's windy, please vote yes on the project and start moving forward. It's time to make a decision and stop all the ugliness in our small town. Thank you for your time tonight. Please vote in favor of the rail tie application.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Ms. Epler, and then we'll come to the room again. The floor is yours. She's muted. Muted, Reba.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for holding this hearing and hearing the comment from the public about this. You've heard it for over a year and a half. I support the project. I grew up in Tysiding, Wyoming, and Hillsdale, Wyoming. I grew up in Tysiding on the Bath Sisters Ranch. My mom is Bonnie Bath. My aunt is Nancy Bath. And my mom and my aunt are trying to protect and preserve the ranch for future generations. I have spent the last nine years of my legal career working for ranchers, helping them do energy developments on their ranches. And I can state that energy development is a very critical part of sustaining ranching and agriculture. Commodity prices vary so widely. In some years, the price of commodities, cattle, sheep, is very high. In other years, it's extremely low. Other factors that impact agriculture are the amount of feed you have to feed in the winter or the cost of labor. And I can personally attest to certain ranches that I have absolutely helped stay in business and not have to sell their ranch because they were able to get an oil lease in, in the case of what I was doing. And I can assert that these, this wind lease will help my family stay in ranching, which is the goal of Albany County. One of the goals stated in the county plan is that they want to help agriculture remain viable through the addition of alternative energy projects on their ranches because the plan recognizes there's not a lot of oil, gas, coal, or other minerals to be developed in this county. And wind is extremely strong here. The wind resource is Class VII. It is the absolute best in the world and we are sitting in the Permian Basin of wind. And to deny the fact that this will produce incredible amounts of revenue for both ranchers and the county is absurd. I would also like to point out, we have heard no credible studies from the opposition that this will impact anyone negatively. However, Connection has conducted a very credible study through an environmental impact statement that there will be no negative impacts and the conclusions were, there will be no negative impacts to the community. Furthermore, I would like to cite the massive oil field that EOG has in Laramie County right next to a very, very high-dollar subdivision at Hereford Ranch. The lots in that ranch, in that ranchette sell very high and they are not affected by oil and gas development nearby. So the assertion that this project will not affect values is absurd. Therefore, I would like to speak in favor of the project and let you know that it will help my family, who's been in Albany County for over six generations, remain in the business of agriculture and that we are tremendous good stewards of the land and we will continue to do so. Therefore, I strongly urge you to approve this project as was recommended by the county planners. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Epler. Okay, here in the room. Yes, sir, in the back, and then the gentleman at the very back next to the sign.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me talk. I would like to mention, there is this discussion.
Your name, please, sir.
There is a, can I take my mask off?
Sure. And you can raise that.
Perfect.
There you go.
There was a discussion by a few of the Commons discussing some of the economic troubles with Albany County. I actually, two things I'm really concerned about is the economic future of Albany County and the loss of young talent in this state. I think the two are, interact with one another. One, if you look at the history of Albany County, one of the reasons that we have an organic business community and one of the reasons that we are one of the top places people want to live in the county for the last two years, according to the Wyoming Department of Economic Analysis, is because we have not relied on natural resources. We have been smart about building an organic community that has not been a welfare state. In, in fact, we're the only state growing right now because we have not chosen to put all of our, all of our poker chips with energy. This will hurt our community. And you guys, I mean, we all know this because one of the top reasons people choose to live here, myself included, I have no invested interest. I don't have any money. I am poor. I don't have any stake in this other than this is a place that is my home. And in this scenario and in this question, everything is about, okay, Albany County, you guys are NIMBYs. Why do you care about your home? I'll tell you about why we care about our home. It's because it's where we have memories. It's where our families live. It's where we have chosen to invest our lives. I came here 11 years ago because I wanted to attend the University of Wyoming. I would not have attended that if I knew that there was going to be windmills there and that this was going to be all developed. Also, I think it's worth mentioning that Albany County, like, why would we give up now? Why would we do it now? We have this long been disciplined, grown our community, done a good job, have shown up. And is one place that employment's going down, where young people are moving here compared to the rest of the state, where we are thriving. And once we're finally getting the rubber meets the road, we're going to go and sell it off to a energy company, which it is an energy company, who has a profit at stake, has an invested interest to make a profit. Let's be clear on that. And you're going to let them make us feel bad and say that we're NIMBY to give up our home, to give up our wildlife, to give up our responsibility to protect our national force in our public spaces, not just for us, for people around the country, for people in this state. So I really, I'm curious, how does this help Albany County's future? Because quite frankly, I see it killing our economy and I see it being what the rest of the state has made the mistake of doing, which has been tying your horse to one, or tying your cart to one horse and hoping that it works out. Let's not do that. We have worked way too hard. We have too many committed people and we have way too much of opportunity to just throw it away now because we're insecure about what to do about climate change. Really, I think everybody should be a NIMBY because if everybody was concerned about what's in their backyard, we probably have the most robust conservation strategy in the country. That's my comment. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Can I get your name, please?
Peter Bishop.
Hi, I'm William Dorsey and I live on the edge of the property out there. Thank you for having this meeting. The wind terminal, wind turbine effect on people's health, resources, environmental, and economic health. Most adverse effects from the wind turbines being located too close is loss of sleep and headaches, which was brought up earlier, anxiety, high blood pressure, tinnitus, loss of hearing. Also reported was motion sickness, nausea, dizziness, head pressure, posterior head pain, balance disorder, cognitive clouding, and posterior head pain, balance disorder, cognitive clouding and pressure in the chest. Shadow flicker. The effect of epileptic is only decreased until the distance is one hundred and ten times the height of the turbine and same for migrainer. Frequencies. People's health will be damaged by low frequency noise strobe from turbines. It is not the case of if, it's a case of when. Water aquifer. Well water reduction due to water during the construction from blasting, removing water from the aquifer, de-watering, lowering the water table, causing residents expense to drill new wells or haul water. Groundwater contamination from chemicals, soil spills, diesel fuel spills and concrete. Blasting effects. Vibrations from blasting, shaking houses, cracking foundations, cracking drywall, dispersing wildlife for years and some forever. Wildlife like elk in this area have just returned to this area in the past six, eight months. After years of being absent for years, two herds returned this fall and recently saw some elk cows this spring. Antelope don't seem to want to be around windmill, windmills because of the turning blades. Decimation of owls, eagles, western metal larks, bats and other flying species. Some species may never return. The economic long term, reduce hunting on state of Wyoming lands hurts citizens of the county and visitors economically to the Laramie area. Long-term costs to Albany County citizens, bridges, roads, fire departments and law enforcement, hotels, motels, restaurants and businesses. Traffic safety, interstates, federal and state highway safety, county roads are not equipped to handle increase in construction activity and will decimate road surfaces that my tax dollars pay for repairs. It'll increase vehicle accidents and fatalities. The red strobing lights lighting up the night skies, airplane safety and foggy conditions. In summary, we citizens should not be considered collateral damage of from the effects of the wind turbines. If this permit is allowed to proceed and all bases are not covered, it will be too late to reverse the damages.
Could you wrap it up, sir, please?
This project is not about saving the planet. It's about making money. How can ConGen be considered a good neighbor when they're trying to take advantage of Albany County and its citizens? There are many significant details that are not in the proposal. Old wildlife studies should be updated and need specific clarity of their project. There are too many loopholes that need to be closed and questions to be answered. Even the World Health Organization states that they are hazardous to your health in Australia. Please honor our request to delay the Rail Tie Wind Project permit until a better proposal is submitted.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. And then uh, about three rows back. Here, you'll be next. No, you're here first and then we'll go here next. Yep. Okay. Okay. Would both of you like to speak? Okay. Okay. So I think we'll do six minutes. How about that?
Susan McGuire, this is Steve McGuire. We've had our shots and we don't have cooties. Okay.
I didn't catch your first name, ma'am.
Am I deferring to you?
Yeah, you are. We've been married for fifty years.
And I didn't catch your first name, ma'am.
Um, we, ecology has already been severely upset in our area. We live about two miles from the whole uh, Granite Canyon thing. And we're going to live two miles from the rail tie thing. So um, we call these wind turbines Cuisinarts like our children in California. They call them Condor Cuisinarts. It's been long known that birds are treated like blenders in in these things. Turbines slice and dice birds into chop suey and they, the kill ratio of bird coverage is nearly a hundred percent. But get real. Ever since Cheyenne plopped, it's a multitude mob of wind turbines about three miles from us. We have never seen an eagle, barn swallow, flycatcher, hawks or raptors of any kind. Once we had sixty-seven bird species and my son is really big into the Audubon and he's reported all of these. Now, it, we're, you're doing good to have seven species. Prior to the massive bird blade gauntlets, all the birds of prey were very commonly sighted flying with captured prey. You frequently saw them sitting on fence posts everywhere, but no more. I didn't see a single one all last summer. Wind turbine bird kill has set us up for a monstrous rodent plague. The, a rodent plan pandemic, I'm going to call it. And it's caused, we think by the wind turbines ravage of the balance of nature. Rodents are the new green deals, uh, wonderful thing, but in cars and trucks and tractors, they have switched to soy based instead of petroleum based wiring. And if you don't have your tractor insured, and even if you do, you will pay a couple thousand to rewire because mice like to eat it. So the, this rodent thing has been unleashed on us and most brands of cars and trucks. And who knows if the electric cars are going to have the same problem? I can't wait to find out. They will eat your vehicle and the vehicle will not run. And I have met people in the area who have had to actually destroy their house rather than sell it or keep it because mice get in the walls, mice are everywhere. And the plague is disturbing because I've caught a hundred and sixty-nine mice in our guest room alone in the last few months. This is serious because prior years it had been about ten mice. A neighbor trapped four hundred in their place. Everyone who lives in former raptor country uh, report the same situation. And it, we know that mice are rodents and they do carry a disease called Hanta. And it does the same thing to your lungs as the COVID bioweapon. It kills your lungs. And we um, already have hundreds of wind turbines three miles to our east. And now Albany County politicians might stamp hundreds of gargantuan hostile to nature turbines. Six, what are they, eight stories high, two miles to our west. The birds obviously can't fly east to west. The wind project, birds can't evade that many scything blades. We are doomed for the greater good. I am warning you and I know that it's for the public good. But I'm warning you, it's already happen happening. And politicians need not to look out for their comrades, but they need to look out for ordinary beings like us. I'm not a CEO. I'm not anything particularly. But I am in this mouse bite, uh, being who, we're struggling with the wind turbine debacle. It's only going to get worse. And it's outrageous. It's follow the money trail. It's trouble. It's going to be trouble for agriculture because birds help with insects and mice get into grain and you just wait and see what's going to happen if you vote for this.
Four minutes. So you have two minutes remaining yourself, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, these things are actually sixty-seven stories tall, not eight, as my wife thought. Uh, sixty-seven stories is very large. These thing, these things, this, this project is not a win-win for everyone, as I've heard. And I know we want to end ugliness. Hey, who's not in favor? The problem is, the bigger they are and the more of them they're uh, the uglier it's going to get. The public is rising up against wind-powered generation. Why is that? I, I'm reading so many articles from the Baltic Sea to the North Sea, around England, to the Atlantic, to our shores and to the Canadian shores. People are learning more about them. The more they learn, the more science we get, the more data we get, the more evidence we get, the worse it gets for wind generation. And by the way, people, yes, will probably get some sports equipment over at the high school. I, I'm really glad about that. And I, and I, and I'm happy for the kids. But there are people in the immediate zone of these behemoth ugly things that are sixty-seven stories tall. This is gargantuan. People in the immediate impact zone of these things are damaged. There are going to be damages. Some people's equity are, is going to be hit into the six figures. And I'm telling you right now, these are torts waiting to happen. And people need to get prepared for that right now. Have appraisers, get out there and appraise their property prior to this crap going on. How is it all happening as people become more knowledgeable about wind? We're getting them all the more. And the answer is crony capitalists and gullible politicians.
Could you wrap it up, please, sir?
I'm being charitable here, I know. Thank you.
Yep. And your first name, ma'am, please. Susan, thank you. Yep, no worries. And uh, this lady right here, thank you. And then we'll go online. This will be our fifth in person.
I just wanted to um, bring you a picture of what our beautiful night skies look like out at Ames Monument where these turbines are proposed.
And your name, please. Can I get your name, please?
My name is Lynn Montoya. I am the owner of Vista de la Luna Bed and Breakfast at eighty-eight Monument Road. I am a business owner and I believe that this project will kill my business and I will be left with a valueless property and nothing to leave to my family and to my children. I also believe that over time, the county will see less revenue from tourism once people find out through social media that uh, we have massive turbines in a historic and recreational area. In two thousand and seven, my husband and I found a beautiful piece of property in Albany County. The views were extraordinary and we had looked in Cheyenne, Colorado and New Mexico. But when it came down to it, we chose to live where we live and we knew it would be perfect for our business and our future. Our vision for sharing this area with people from all over the world excited us. My husband and I came to the city and to the county to find out what we needed to do to begin building our dream of sharing this area with others. We followed all of the rules, low light levels that were required. We found and followed any setbacks that were required. We had the proper permits, inspections, and there was even a question at that time about how traffic would be affected on Monument Road. My husband then spent the next seven years building our dream. We have invested our money and ourselves into this community. We refer our guests to the many locally owned restaurants, shops and galleries, plus all of the great historic, beautiful places that our county has to offer before they leave. Needless to say, our guests are wowed by what they see and experience here in Albany County. A couple of quotes from our guests are, what a public, perfect retreat. There was a new view out every window. By the way, we loved Sweet Melissa's Restaurant. We came to Wyoming for the first time to visit Cheyenne Frontier Days. What a beautiful place. The views, the hikes and antelope, what a treat. What kind, uh, what a find. We arrived late and the night skies were filled with the most beautiful stars. What an amazing gem in the middle of the plains. We couldn't believe the view of the Rocky Mountains. We discovered two hidden gems, Vitavu and the Ames Monument. The last one, what an amazing oasis in Wyoming. More recently, our guests have asked, what are they proposing to build out here? These are based on the posted signs. We have shared with them about the Connect Gen Rail Tie Industrial Wind Farm and they are shocked by it. If the turbines were here, they have told us they would choose not to stay. County Commissioners, I would ask you to deny Connect Gen's permit and please update the rulings for our county to our, to properly cite these industrial wind farms. The valley from Ames Monument to Boulder Ridge is not the place. Remember, tourism is our second largest asset to the state, not big wind.
Thank you. So we'll go online. Uh, first up Lawrence Strumpf and then Ron Wilson followed by Taylor Norton. So Lawrence, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Oh, thank you. Uh, my name's Lawrence Strumpf and I've lived in Laramie for almost thirty years. Um, I've been an educator in Albany County for almost twenty years. I'm excited about the Rail, right, Rail Tie Wind Project and its benefit to Albany County and our education system. As coal quickly becomes more expensive and electric cars rapidly become the standard, it is critical that we build these wind farms now to support our future energy and transportation needs. This Memorial Day weekend, my family and I climbed to the top of Turtle Rock at Vitavu. We could see the wind turbines towards Cheyenne and I actually thought they looked nice. I remember as a child, I always wanted to go to Holland to see the wind turbines there. And I still do. I would love to go to Holland to see the wind turbines. So I, I don't really feel that they interfere with our beauty at all. In fact, they even add to it in a way. As I travel around the wind farms of Cheyenne, Medicine Bow, Arlington and other areas throughout the Rocky Mountains, I have viewed antelope, deer and elk all habitating underneath the wind turbines and around them unaffected. So they don't really seem to have an effect on big game. At the same time, I drive to Rollins almost every week. And every time I drive to Rollins, the um, fences and um, telephone poles between Laramie and Rollins are, have lots of eagles and hawks that do not seem to be affected by the wind turbines. As well as the bird game, you know, around those areas. We need wind farms to create jobs and revenue. With the current legislative cuts, over a thousand direct jobs and about four thousand indirect jobs will be lost in Wyoming. That's about five thousand families leaving Wyoming and many of them teachers. And so like you, I would rather have energy and revenue that's produced with something that we can see like wind turbines rather than that that poisons our water and air like coal. As I understand, about half of the electricity we produce in Wyoming is sold out of state. And that's because we're an energy state. We realize that electricity and energy is a product that we produce and sell. So any logic that it needs to be used here is illogical. Anyhow, I am strongly in favor of this and how it will support our economy and the future of our state. So, thank you.
You, Mr. Strumpf. Ron Wilson, you're up next. Taylor Norton on deck and Klaus, um, you're behind Taylor Norton. Go ahead, Ron. You're uh, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, as a pilot of over twenty years with thousands of hours of experience, um, I feel somewhat qualified to speak about the aircraft attention lighting systems or ADLS that Connect Gen is um, depending on, that will turn the lights off at night unless there's an aircraft in the area. And I've written to each of you with the details, so I won't go into um, the weeds on this. But the FAA is the final arbiter on what happens with ADLS systems with structures such as Connect Gen's towers. The, in, in order to even be eligible, uh, the, the obstructions, meaning the towers need to be at least three nautical miles or a way clear that a pilot can see. clear that a pilot can see that and understanding when you're coming in for a landing in Laramie, you're you're traveling between one hundred and fifty and two hundred miles an hour in the air. And the the Connect Gen's map clearly shows that many of the towers are not three nautical miles clear of mountains. And so therefore, they fall into another subcategory of the FAA rules. And the FAA is can will take these on a case by case basis to modify, adjust, or just flat out deny the use of ADLS lightings on all or some of the towers. And specifically, they're very concerned with low low altitude flight routes. And the number one and and most economical way to get into Laramie if you're an airliner coming up from Denver or coming from the west is runway three zero. And it's a straight in approach which passes right over the town of what was Sherman. So right between I eighty and and two eighty seven. So the in order if if there's obstructions within this three mile radius, then the 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 power of the lights on top of the windmills have to be increased by a factor of ten. So most of these wind turbines you see at night have candlelight power, two thousand candlelight power. When when we're dealing with something within that three mile radius, it has to go to twenty thousand candlelight power. So I'll conclude by saying many people proponents, I I wonder how many proponents live within five miles of this development or four, three, or two or or one mile of this development that aren't getting paid by Connect Gen? I've never heard of one. And many people say the benefits outweigh the limited impact. And I guess that all depends on where you're living. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Norton, three minutes. The the floor is yours. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. I think you can, Commissioner, for allowing me to speak today. I am here to voice my support for this project. As a ten year resident of Albany County and a fifteen year resident of Wyoming, sixteen, it has been one of my most profound frustrations to that to the fact that there aren't any wind farms in the immediate vicinity because it's just such a no brainer. This is an incredibly windy area, and it's ripe for vast economic possibilities just from the amount of wind we have alone. In my capacity, when I was a student on my college speech and debate team, I also ended up doing a lot of research into various forms of energy production. And at the time, the best argument, you know, against wind energy was its cost and inefficacy, but both of those arguments have become weaker and weaker over time as energy efficiency from wind turbines has improved and the cost to produce it has gone down. Supporting this project is is a perfect opportunity for not only Albany County, but Wyoming in general, to keep taking steps forward into the burgeoning energy industry that exists beyond fossil fuels. And to ignore that opportunity is to stay stuck in the past and stay tied to a form of energy that is decreasing in efficiency and cost effectiveness and is, as has been alluded to previously, poisoning our our atmosphere and just generally being a horrible pollutant. Moreover, the notion that Albany County is not currently already dependent on an energy company is patently absurd because the University of Wyoming is here and is a huge influx of economic value. And it in itself is funded, not funded, but receives many, many donations from Halliburton. So to try and say that this is somehow worse than that is ridiculous to me. The people who have come forward with this project, who have been supporting it all along, have done their research. They know what they're talking about. They studied the impacts, economic and otherwise. And we've studied the benefits, economic and otherwise, and far and away, those benefits outweigh the harms. And simply, it's it's simply a no brainer to support this project because it's just the right thing to do. And I strongly urge my Commissioners to vote in favor of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Norton. Next up, Klaus Halbski. Klaus, go on ahead. Floor is yours.
Can you hear me okay?
We have you loud and clear. Thanks, Klaus.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Gosar, Commissioners Iberian Richardson. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Klaus Halbski, and I am a longtime resident and business owner in Albany County. I've seen many businesses come and many more go over my lifetime here in Laramie and Albany County. The reason my family is even here is because my father moved our small family here from Massachusetts to be the service manager at a local, the local VW dealership. Where is that dealership now? Like many businesses over the decades, it is no longer here. Besides the many car dealerships we have lost over time, there have been many other businesses that have left or closed. I could count them, but I do not have enough time. I believe it is time we stop this trend. Connect Gen and the Rail Tie Project should not be a one and done. Commissioners, you should approve this and show corporations that are looking to invest in Albany County that we want positive development, not just wind and solar, but other development as well. We should show industry leaders that we are open for businesses and can pay a decent wage to our residents so that they might actually stay in Albany County and be able to afford our overinflated housing market. I know there's a lot of extraordinarily strong opinions on this development. The Not in My Backyard and Anti Change Coalition is very vocal. I appreciate their concerns, but I believe you must do what is in the greater good for the majority of county residents. Albany County is the poorest county in the state. We have not financially benefited from mineral wealth like other counties have. This is our opportunity to benefit from renewable energy and and not get left behind economically again. Whether our county gets behind renewable energy or not, the nation will. Take a look at what's happening in our neighboring counties, states, and nationwide. A massive offshore wind development just got approved approved off of Martha's Vineyard. Yes, Martha's Vineyard. It is expected from all the research I have read that there will be three hundred percent plus growth in green energy over the next couple of decades. Why should we not benefit from what is obviously going to happen anyway? Commissioners, I know you have gotten a lot of free advice on this topic. Every development has a downside, and I understand the concerns for wildlife welfare. Eagles, raptors are magnificent animals. We should do all we can to protect them. I recently read a report in recharge news dot com about a study in Wyoming that was published in January of this year. It talks about technology using smart cameras, optical sensors, and machine learning. And it was estimated to be able to reduce eagle deaths by eighty two percent. Is it perfect? No, but a step in the right direction and technology will only get better. The future is here. The only question left is, are we going to be part of it? Thank you for your time. I wish you well and hope you're all in good health.
Thank you, Mr. Halbski. And next up, Adam Nash, and then we'll go to the the group here in person. Adam, you're the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Hey there. My name's Adam Nash. I'm actually a transplant from California. I am a remote worker. And Albany County is a place I choose home because of natural beauty. One of the big problems I have is the wind project's going to take away from that. I work in finance, and every single day I see a lot of wind project getting approved. But the way they actually approve them, it is not actually on land. All the ones getting approved in Europe, how we talked about that's the future, they're getting approved in the ocean. Why? Because it has a huge environmental impact. A lot of the speeches I've heard today on people talking about the proposed benefits sound exactly like the email I got from Sierra Club just a few days ago. Me personally, I will not stay here because I don't have a stake to stay here in Albany County if this goes up because I like being here for the wildlife. Now, if the wildlife starts getting destroyed, there's no reason for me to stay here. My wife and I can pick up. We can go start a family elsewhere. What we want in Albany County is young talent. We want people who are here who are going to be able to contribute to the economy. One big business that's going to contribute a total of eight jobs is not something that we want to have for thirty five years. We want a lot of people like me to rebuild a state like Wyoming. You want younger people. You want people who are going to contribute over the long term. You want people who were going to have roots here and are going to be here a long time. Now, when it comes to wind farms, we talk about everything that's going to happen now. We don't talk about what will happen when all the wind farms get taken down. Everything's going to get thrown into a landfill, and it's going to be just destructive. We all like to pretend that the future doesn't matter. The future does matter. The future is what we make of it. And if we build these wind farms, then we throw everything into a landfill. Are we really making the environment better with stuff that will not degrade? It doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't make any sense for me to stay here if we're going to be ruining the biggest asset that Albany County has. No one's talking about the impact that will happen if we build it. We're only talking about the impact for the wind side. We're not talking about the economic impact of people like me who will move because I am very able to. The world is more mobile than any time in the past nowadays. I can pick up my job. I can go over to the next city, and I can just set up there, and I will have the environment right there. There's no reason to approve it as I see it, as all it will do is destroy the tourism economy, which others have said is the second biggest economy in Wyoming. There are much better things we can do. We don't need to have infinite money to make schools better. Being from California, I can tell you, we spend some of the most money in California on education and get the worst outcomes. Money is not necessarily the problem when it comes to education, and we need to consider the long term impacts and the environmental impacts afterwards and just say, hey, it's going to bring us some money now and forget about what's going to be the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Let's start over here. Yes, the gentleman here in the third row. Yes, yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, I'd like to ask if I could take thirty seconds off the record to verify that my letter that was sent by email was was gotten to the commission. I was told by a friend that he did not see it in the packet, and I addressed a number of issues, including what Dr. Kelty addressed, and also gave a update on the changing legal landscape and what you guys as a county are going to be facing in five years when the new science that's coming in is incorporated. And it's going to include, when these things are known more widely, it's going to start including punitive damages as well. So not only will people be able to file suit, there may be some new things. And I hope your attorney is looking into that because it's going to cost us as a county down the road. Anyway, I described that in that letter.
Your name, sir?
Alan Miller.
Alan Miller.
And if it's not in the packet, and I you did email me back and say you forwarded it on a couple of weeks ago. But I was traveling, and I was told it may not be in there. So just if you would check on that. It did get in in the in a timely manner. I would like to make sure it's in there because I think it might be helpful.
Okay.
But anyway.
One of the Commissioners, Commissioner Ibera saw it.
Okay, great. I should have just asked that to begin with. Sorry. I live with my wife at eight sixteen Hermosa Road. I believe we may be the most impacted family in all the county. I know it's kind of gutsy to say, but we might be. We grew up on a ranch fourteen miles south of there. Started my career in Laramie and came back in retirement, moved up to Vitavu. In the meantime, I spent about thirty years managing up to five million acres of public land, mostly in Alaska. Have many years of experience with working through approving, not approving developments, not so much wind developments, but other large scale development on public lands. So I hope you'll take this, you know, with a little bit of credence. But anyway, we decided to take on long winters, rural chores, distant medical care in our sixties, moved up to Vitavu so our grandkids and us could have great mountain views and wildlife. There are six mountain ranges viewable from there. It's a rare thing in this country. My family would be devastated by the project. Over a hundred turbines will be visible. Some is close to thirty two hundred feet. Even Long's Peak at over fourteen thousand feet will have to be viewed through moving turbine blades along with virtually every other summit in those mountain ranges. Nine towers to the west would cause flicker on our house over three hundred days a year during the sunset especially, which up to now have been amazing. To see the project's full effect on my family, I invite you to visit. I provided my contact information to the county planner, and I hope you would consider that. As a decision maker in the past, I never made decisions of this magnitude without visiting in person. Developers claim that all wind projects can be addressed and mitigated. Opponents claim that none can be. In my opinion, although most all issues can be mitigated in appropriate locations, this is not an appropriate location. I can only think of one spot in the entire county that would be as bad to put a wind farm, the Snowy Range Summit. Are we willing to protect only one place in the entire county from this type of a development? Not meaning that it's inherently bad, but it's not for everywhere. If we're not willing to protect Vitavu as the second place, where would we protect? Now, quickly, I just want to wrap up by talking about the developers' claims on the benefits to the county. And every number I put in here is from the county website, the state tourism board website, or the developer's website. The developer claims three point three million in tax revenues to the county over the long term, sustained after construction's finished, and twenty three permanent jobs. Tourism, as been touched on earlier, brings in thirty six million in earnings to the county annually and supports sixteen hundred jobs. That's three point three million direct tax revenues, albeit. It's not a direct comparison to thirty six million, but that thirty six million is still coming into the county. And of course, some of that's going to the state and coming back to the county, to schools. And twenty three versus sixteen hundred jobs in the long term. Let's please think in the long term. You could ask yourself, though, can we protect, can we have the project and maximize tourism? No, we can't. I've researched tourism on public lands for years, published peer reviewed studies, and given presentations from Alaska to Maine on the subject. And assure you that people who travel to participate in hiking, camping, fishing, hunting, bird watching, canoeing, and climbing, all of which Vitavu provides, are seeking a high degree of naturalness. Many surveys have shown that a lack of sights and sounds of industry are a major factor in their selection process. Make no mistake, Vitavu will be changed for the rest of our lifetimes. The developer chose to use Buford as a representative site to show what the wind farm would look like from I eighty. It was very deceptive. From Vitavu Campground and I eighty exit, it would be very different. Instead of thirty towers, it'd be closer to sixty, and they would be half as far away. In summary, Vitavu is an amazing place close to Laramie that is used by residents and tourists that can't be replaced. Tourism about is about ten times more important in our county than is this wind project. Even a two to five percent decline in tourism would erase all of the long term revenue, every penny of it, from this project. And this project will, as you've heard from some people, cause a decline in tourism. I strongly oppose the project because in the long run, it will cost us. Although it may be a minor side note to some, it would be a life changing decrease in the quality of life for my family and two hundred others. And it will degrade the quality of recreation available to every county resident. In my last sentence, if you lived where I live, bordered on two sides by the project, one twenty three hundred feet away, thirty two hundred feet, I'm sorry, nine of them, a short distance beyond that, would you vote for it? It's just something to think about. Thank you, all of you for your time.
And I have a hand way in the back there. It looks like a dark shirt on, or there we go. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Missy Cramshuster. I live at one oh two Hermosa Road in Tysiding, Wyoming. I am here to speak on behalf of myself and my husband Dylan. We are we're both born and raised here in Laramie, Wyoming. I want to thank each of you for your time today and listening to our concerns regarding the Rail Tie Wind Project. I want to state that I'm not here I want to state that I'm not here to tell you that wind energy is bad. I just want you to hear my concerns with the regulations and this project that is proposed right now. As I, as the first projected maps of the wind turbines have been out, I live at the house that is the closest proximity to a turbine. Point three two miles from my bedroom window, point three miles from my fence line and approximately point two five miles from my mother-in-law's and my baby's graves. My concern is that these turbines are going to be placed close to the, too close to property lines and that I will not be able to enjoy the graveside and that that memorial will forever be ruined, that I will not be able to enjoy my land that I pay taxes on. Next, I am very concerned, only being 27 years old and just a couple of years into paying my mortgage, that my property value is going to decrease immensely and that I will never be able to get my value back on my property where I bought it. With the propos, per proposed turbines, I assure you that, that me as well as my neighbors' property taxes will and should not be at the value that they are now because of the decrease in my property value. I also am very concerned about the lighting and the noise impact on my property and what it will do to the area. I do not have window coverings in my house because of how beautiful the area is. I am very worried that I will no longer be able to sleep peacefully or be able to have my windows open. I am also very concerned about the water wells being impacted and potentially not being able to have potable water due to the insulation of the turbines and cracking of the rock in the area as most of my property is on solid rock. My last point I want to talk about is the use of the roads, including Hermosa Road and Highway 287. I have a strong concern that 287 is already a very dangerous and deadly road and that accidents and traffic deaths will increase with the increased people traveling this road for the project. And I also am very concerned that Hermosa Road is not equipped to handle the traffic load and infrastructure that is to come with the project. Um, it will cause issues for me and my husband to travel to and from work as I work in the medical field and my husband is a first responder for this community. And we do not have an option to miss work or to be late. I ask that you listen to my concerns as well as my neighbors and reconsider where this project is proposed of being placed. It's too close to homes, people's lives and will ruin the quality of life in this area of Wyoming. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just down in here, and then we go here to this gentleman, I mean, middle and then to the front. See, I don't know, he gets the books and then we got this one and then you Nate.
Uh, my name is Chris Sorenson. I'm speaking on behalf of Kurt and Nancy Richardson, um, owners of and founders of Old Elk Ranch. Um, I am the ranch manager. Kurt really regretted not being here today to give this statement, but uh, he was pulled away on a prior engagement. So um, he asked me to deliver this for him. Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to hear from landowners that will be impacted by the rail tie win project. My family and I came to this area of Wyoming because of its beauty and serenity. We've worked hard to attain the American dream and that dream is manifested in our ranch here in Albany County. If you know me, you're aware that I am not one to ever tell another what he or she can or cannot do with their property. But I do believe strongly in the responsible land use and preserve, and preserving the natural beauty and wildlife habitat for the gateway to this great county and state. The rail tie win project would have a substantial impact to neighboring properties as well as to the wildlife that so many of us cherish. In fact, it is my belief that we do not yet know the full impact of these turbines that these turbines could have on our future state of our land. What we do know is that the, at the very least, installing 120 600-foot tall wind turbines with 250-foot blades in a highly visible area will detract from our property values due to visual and audio pollution and will degrade the open space that we all love. This area is a haven for golden eagles, owls and raptors. Studies have proven wind farms result in the death of birds and wildlife such as bats. A study in Ontario, Canada showed that a single work wind turbine at a farm had been responsible for over, for as many as five bird deaths a year. Multiply that by 120 and this will have a very real impact on this population. Additionally, proposed site, this proposed site is a migratory path for mule deer, elk, mule deer, elk and antelope. Studies have also shown that wind farms constructed will disrupt deer population for over 10 years. And the population will not return if the habitat is significantly altered. My family and I believe that we must be stewards of our land and that we have, and we have a vision to create a one-of-a-kind ranch retreat, not only for ourselves and our future generations, but for charities, nonprofit, nonprofits and community organizations. This project will threaten these plans. Moreover, there are many unknowns with this project. What will be the impact of the roads due to the increased traffic, especially throughout the construction period? What are the potential impacts to aquifer? And how will the threat of fires be enhanced? We just barely survived a, a record-breaking fire season that none of us will soon forget. And I for one, not interested in increased fire risk in this area. I think wind power is a great thing, but this is not the right spot for this project. There are many areas of Wyoming less populated by humans and wildlife that could be, that could house this wind farm. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Martin, and then this gentleman here in the striped shirt. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Nate Martin. I'm the Director of Better Wyoming and I'm a homeowner in Laramie. I guess I'm just wondering what the plan is. Because as you all know, we've seen significant decreases in state contributions to the county's budget. And yet people who live in the county still want snow removal services, still want fire services, still want ambulance services, still want law enforcement, and none of these things is free. So in the face of these budget difficulties, what's the plan? I think the contributions that this rail tie win project would make to our county revenues is a good plan. What I see absent from the conversation are alternatives. I don't see people talking about maybe we should make up for this budget shortfall fall by increasing property taxes. I don't hear anybody increasing sales tax or proposing an income tax. In fact, the geographic locus of the opposition to this project is in the middle of the House District that elected the only member of the Albany County Legislative Delegation that ran specifically on a no taxes platform. So it's this issue of wanting services, wanting public services, but not wanting to pay for them. I think most people in Albany County understand that that's not realistic. Is the rail tie project a perfect plan? Of course not. Such a thing doesn't exist. But I think it's a pretty good plan. And I think most of the people in Albany County agree with me. And if y'all don't, then I ask you, what's the plan? Raise taxes?
Please, Director Chair. Please, and this gentleman, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Martin. So, um, please, right, we started this conversation about having respect and politeness and conducting professional meeting. Quite honestly, if it continues, right, and gets worse, um, there's very little that I can do to stop that, right? And so, um, we'll disend public comment sooner. So please, um, give, um, your done, do attention and, and thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, my name is Sean Clark. A little bit of a background, I grew up in the airline business. Uh, over 20 years, started at the very bottom, left head of Global Security Operations for Continental and then United Airlines. Welcome to my Texas friends. I lived 20 years in Texas. But I'm hoping to get up here and speak and maybe just give you a little bit different perspective. When I heard about this issue and we are relatively new to the community, I'm very familiar with the Front Range. My parents and my sister used to live in Loveland Fort Collins area. Uh, since I was a teenager, I've been trying to get back to the Front Range. Our daughters ultimately came, brought us out here. Uh, one graduated, going to be a CPA, the other one's still attending. And we are at a point where we too work virtual, um, consulting, I can consult anywhere. Uh, my wife's full-time virtual and we're trying to figure out where do we want to go? Where do we want to end up? Where are we most, you know, going to be happy? Um, for me, being from Iowa originally, I grew up around the farm boys. And there's something to be said for the agrarian work ethic, morals, ethics in general. We talk a lot about the cowboy way and to me that translates into you help your neighbor. You look out for your neighbor. You certainly, and you also preserve the rural character that, that is, that we're enjoy every day. Um, I want to give you a couple of examples of where open space management, a couple of successes that I've witnessed firsthand and been a part of. Uh, in Texas, I lived in the Woodlands. I'm sure all of you Houstonians are familiar with the Woodlands, Texas. It was one of the first master plan communities in the country. Uh, I met my wife there. I raised, our, our daughters were reared there. We finished them in Midwest. But when you fly over the Woodlands, Texas, I'd say now the population's probably 80 to 100,000. It looks like a forest. You can't tell it's a subdivision. So they did a good job. When we moved to Chicago, I did my best to get as close to Iowa as I could. We live 40 miles west of the city, small community. And being a consultant, I was able to take part, uh, and more serve the community. I was actually on the planning commission in Camp Town Township. And we saw what was happening to the surrounding neighborhoods in the suburbs and me being the farm boy from Iowa, I saw the farmland disappearing. And once it's gone, it's gone forever. So I did volunteer for the planning commission and we made it a point. First thing we did is we changed the plan and I, when I heard about this issue, I looked at the plan probably in county and it, and ours is very similar. And I see the number one thing you have, protect the natural environmental resources. The number two thing you have is promote economic development. Now, sometimes those things collide, but you, you have to make that choice. It falls on your shoulders. We made the choice. We, we rewrote the rules to say, we're going to preserve the rural character regardless of profit. You have to be responsible. Um, I am for wind, but I am for responsible wind. Uh, we, and the other point is, I also read up and moving here, promoting economic development. We have the Sierra Sky Technology Park up there. It's a fantastic spot. I'm afraid that if you approve this, you're, you're saying no to technology development. In the long run, I think, south of town, that's a national treasure. We're not talking about just a couple of ranches here. We're talking about the city, this community. So I hope you look at it through that lens and think long-term. Because if you take the short financial route here, um, I think there are better alternatives and you're, you're just going to kill any opportunity for technology. No, no technology company is going to come here. Lastly, I'll leave it with this, a couple, a couple of guys or other also virtual. Post-pandemic, we're on the cusp of a max, mass exodus from all these city centers. They are looking for places, secondary places to live and work. It's about where they want to raise their family and they can't afford Jackson. So this is a very viable, for the same reasons we moved here, a very viable opportunity for a lot of those people to bring their work here, to bring their tax dollars here, to bring their technology here. So I hope you take that into consideration, um, leverage some good sense, which is not common, and preserve the rural character that we have. This is a national treasure south of us. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. We'll go to the online and that's five. Heidi Raphonies, excuse me if I'm butchering your name, followed by Dan Fluid. Heidi, three minutes, uh, the floor is yours.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Thank you for appearing. Gozar and the members of the committee. We bought this home in large part for the unobstructed southern view across from the natural High Plains Prairie, all the way to the mountains to the south. And the peaceful and quiet out here out of high fire danger. It should be, should have been fail-safe as we back up to BLM land. My child and future generations deserve to experience the same quiet views, wildlife and bird watching. I never have thought that the county might allow 675 structures, 675 foot structures we put up. If we wanted to live by skyscrapers, we would have moved to Denver with the city noise. Do you know how many bald eagles reside or hunt in the area near the proposed area? I don't, but I know of two personally, north of there. How do wind, how often do wind turbines catch on fire? How many of you Commissioners have been evacuated for a wildfire? I was in the catastrophic Hyde Park Fire, two weeks and then another week not knowing if my home would burn down or not. How many of you have been temporary housing, thinking every hour of every day? Again, I was evacuated in 2020 here. And turbines are known to catch fire. Speaking of which, how many of you here or in the audience are on the volunteer fire departments? Did you know that the fire stations in town don't respond outside? They call the volunteer departments first. My husband has personally scrambled from way out here to get clear across to the southern edge of town for a house fire because it was outside of city limits. So I'm sorry, I have to disagree with the former speaker that was talking about, ooh, county people want services. Well, you know, police don't come out here. It's a sheriff. Nor the firefighters. I'm sure you've seen the article in the Casper Tribune taking all those broken blades into their landfill. Is our county landfill supposed to absorb all those blades? Or, or do we ship them to Casper too? By the way, how long does it take for a blade to degrade in a landfill? How many of you have joined? Regarding ideal wind, wind states for these word, wind turbines, the high winds out here and we have microbursts that take off entire roofs of houses, including tresses, just like tornadoes. How many times have you driven by Saratoga and seen the wind turbines locked down with their brakes on? That means, sure, it means more blades and brakes for the manufacturers that are not in the state. But what does it mean for the residents of Wyoming? How many of our energy industry workers will this put back in unemployment since the energy oil moratorium? I see the Texas company Connect Gen making money. I see turbine manufacturers out of state making money. By the way, Vesta Windsor has a shameful history of layoffs. But what about?
Excuse me, Heidi, 30 seconds remaining.
Who has listened to energy per acre produced? Who would put so much at risk to take eight times the amount of land for less reliable industry than the coal leaves, still leaves Wyoming families without a job? Eight times the acreage to produce the same amount of electricity a coal plant does reliably. As others said, we have a small business here and we chose here for a reason. And we can take our small business and employees, gainfully employees, many long-term employees elsewhere. I very much appreciate your time. Please at least take 45 days to consider what you're hearing tonight before you vote. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Foney. Um, next up, Dan Fluid, followed by Brad Enzie. Dan, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
And thank you, Chairman Gozar. Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to offer some public comment. Uh, as you stated, my name is Dan Fluid. I'm General Manager of Bara Services in, in Laramie County. But we, we are an energy services provider company, service company that uh, works with traditionally in the oil and gas industry. Uh, we employ people throughout the region, including, uh, individuals who live in, in York County. With the unprecedented disruption in our traditional industries, uh, we were, uh, left with the decision to diversify our operations. One of the areas that we have diversified into, uh, is working in wind energy, in uh, construction, in maintenance, in providing services, uh, in this, uh, venue. What we have found is that, uh, I, our teams of, of employees are very capable of making this shift. We support. We support this project proposed by Connect Gen in your county. We see many benefits, including the opportunity to provide many local jobs that are good paying jobs that will keep people in the area that will, they will be able to provide for their families. Those salaries that would be produced will be magnified many times over throughout the economy locally. So there is an additional benefit. There's been a lot of anecdotal comments made in regard to wildlife and livestock and things of this nature. We have worked out in many of these projects around them as we continue to provide services. And we see the animals actually carrying on as normal. We're not, we're not witnessing, you know, some of the things that, that have been stated here. So we're, we're very much a proponent for this project. We want to be involved with it. We have no commitment that we will be involved with it, but we hope to, because we care about having Wyoming people employed to, to help build this project and to see this growth and benefit to not only the community, but to the region. Thank you for this time to be able to provide these comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fluid. Appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Brad Enzie, followed by Barrett Shipman. Brad, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Chairman Gosar, members of the commission, I thank you. My name is Brad Enzie. I'm the president and CEO of the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance. We're the local economic development agency and also serve as the one-stop shop for business events and networking in Albany County. I come to you today not to speak today in a pro or con position, but in a process position. And that is the processes that businesses make in deciding to cite or not cite and what goes into that. At its core, the mission of the LCBA is to help grow the local job and tax base. Regardless of the type of business, when a business is looking to invest hard capital into the development and construction of a project, they are looking for surety. Surety boils down to four following things. What are the rules that my project must meet? What are the requirements for filing and can they be met? What is the timeline for approval and can the process be altered once it's begun? No matter the business type of investment or scale of investment, the business looks at the likelihood that the dollars expended can be returned. When the process is unclear, allowed to be, or is allowed to be reinterpreted or has moving requirements, businesses choose to place their capital elsewhere. Impacts of these changes midstream also don't only affect one segment, but signal that the jurisdiction is difficult to do business in. And investments are, investments in a very competitive environment are lost to places that have procedural certainty. I think you've heard many of these same ideas echoed on both sides of the issue. And in order to move projects and process forward and encourage future development in Albany County, we need to follow, we need to make sure that we have a clearly defined process for businesses to place capital in our, in our area. We encourage businesses to follow the established processes and meet timelines laid out in the process. We also ask that those processes be followed and trust that rules and regulations outline and a, the rules and regulations that are outlined be approved and followed. Processes and timelines are at the core of businesses' decisions. And altering either the rules or timelines midstream impacts not only the project under consideration, but future investments in our county. So tonight I just wanted to bring up that when things get into the process and people have met requirements, that we encourage that on all sides of all issues and encourage the commission to continue the process and move towards certainty for businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enzie. Next up, Barrett Shipman, followed by Cal Ness, and then we'll go to the in-person. Barrett, three minutes, please. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Apologize I lost video, but can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Gosar, Commissioner Abera, Commissioner Richardson, my name is Barrett Shipman. And I'm here tonight to speak very in favor of the rail tie project. I have lived and worked in Laramie for fifteen years. Over that time, Laramie has struggled to diversify its economy. The university, hospital, YOTech and a few successful businesses that employ more than a hundred people have made a difference. But approving the wind project will drastically diversify our economic base. The opportunity for a wind farm has many positive impacts on the community as a whole. First, the creation of needed jobs. We struggle to employ individuals because of lack of jobs for their spouse or kids. Wind power has enabled the US industry growth and US competitiveness locally. New wind projects account for over ten billion dollars in investment in our US economy. We are experiencing an immediate increase in gas prices due to energy controlled outside the US. Laramie has a vast domestic resource that can be completed with energy resources coming from outside the US. Over the past ten years, the US wind power capacity has grown fifteen percent per year and is the largest source of renewable power. And guess what Laramie has an endless supply of? Wind. We can sell wind and yes, we should. Specific to the Laramie Rail Tie Wind Project, it greatly benefits the local economy. The amount of money that comes to our schools is greatly needed. We have trouble attracting a good workforce, teachers, coaches or business people because of the lack of jobs for spouses and families. The best wind sites are found on farmers and ranchers' lands. It allows the farmer and rancher to continue to work the land because the wind turbines uses only a fraction of land. The lease payments add a much needed boost and allows leaseholders to make an additional income. This actually saves our view shed instead of buildings, big box stores or factories coming in, we can leave the spaces wide open. Additionally, the view of wind turbine is much more pleasing than housing developments or the things I just mentioned. I respect the fact that wind power divides people. Outside Laramie, the underlying sport has began to surface. The quality of wind turbines has progressed as the technology has been explored. The issue of fire suppression is workable. We can find solutions to mitigate the opposition's concern. The construction of wind turbines is shallow and will not impact the drinking water from that location. The project size is proportionate to the area that is being constructed. The density is way less than older wind farm areas. It is my understanding that a taller turbine would create even less density. This may be something to explore with, with Connect Gen. Again, these are things that are minor compared to the great benefit of approving the application. I have seen many false statements and half truths in the propaganda and mailers. It's unfortunate this, this is the result of a project that brings fourteen million in tax revenue in year one and up to five million per year. This is a tax revenue we desperately need as the city, county, school district, university and state are looking at major cuts in the coming months.
Thirty seconds, please.
It's time to make a decision and stop the continued dispute. Don't continue to kick the can down the road. This issue has been bounced around several times in several different venues and the same points from both sides continue to come up. Please vote tonight in favor of the rail tie project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Cal Ness, you have the floor, three minutes, and then we'll go to the room here, please. Go ahead, Cal. You're muted, Cal, if you're trying to talk. We can't hear you. Cal? Give you one more shot there. We'll come back to you, Cal. Addison Fori, we have you up next and Cal will come to you in the next round.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Addison Fori. I'm finishing up my freshman year in high school. I've listened to all of the meetings my mom and asked if I could speak to support the project. I'm full support of Rail Tide Wind Project and how it benefits out our town in the future of energy. Electricity is necessary part of our daily lives. Due to many factors, wind is a cost efficient, effective, clean, widely available energy sources. It's in our backyards and I personally find wind turbines relaxing and aesthetically pleasing. As a runner, one thing I know is Laramie has a lot of wind and we can turn this into dollars for our school and community is awesome that we have and can sell that for wind power. I have read many articles and discussed them with my parents and classmates. I really don't understand why people say ruins the landscape. They think that they represent pride for my state and that we are moving in a good direction. There are lots of visual ugly things as you come into Laramie and one of those is not wind turbines. The article that indicates this is widely opposed is sad. Many people are afraid to support it because they will lose business or afraid they will be criticized by members of influence in our community that oppose this project because they live close to the project site. We are an energy hungry society. We must find alternative sources and they need to be green. Wind farms are not option, is an option. Wind farms are the key necessity to maintaining levels of energy consumptions and ensuring we can continue to protect the environment. I'm proud that we are doing something as a community to solve some of the energy problems. And it makes sense since we have infinite amounts of wind. We have the resources to create energy and the county commissioners should support this application and all the benefits that it brings to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison. I appreciate it. Back to the room here, Paul, and then we'll go to the two people back there and then this young lady here with the multicolored mask, Tim. Thank you.
Long evening, huh?
That's all right.
Long evening, huh?
Yeah, that's all right.
Long day for you all. Chairman Goesar, Albany County Commissioners, I thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Paul Montoya. I'm representing Albany County for smart energy development. So it's not to be accused of providing misleading information by the applicant. I'll submit tonight what comes from the applicant's draft environmental study submitted to the Western Area Power Administration and Connect Gen website. Some quotes from the draft environmental impacts statement first. Page twenty-five, according to the twenty thirteen BLM studies, section four dot one dot one turbine blade movement is often visible at a distance up to twenty-four miles. Page twenty-eight, FAA lights associated with the project would introduce a dense horizon cluster of flashing lights into a rural landscape that is relatively dark at night and would therefore introduce great degree of contrast to existing lights up to twenty-five miles away. Page twenty-eight, twenty-nine, based on the twenty thirteen study prepared for by the BLM, FAA lights were noted as being visible at distances up to thirty-six point two miles. Page twenty-nine of the study, astronomers are primarily concerned with the impacts of sky glow, a glow in the night sky derived from artificial light sources. The draft EIS created thirteen key observation points. Seven of the thirteen points would have moderate to strong visual impact, including South Laramie, Vitavu Recreation Area, Mordenson Lake National Wildlife Area, Ames Monument, Thai Siding and Fish Creek. The Vitavu Contrast worksheets included in the report stated the element contrast attracts attention and begins to dominate or appear as a co-dominant feature in the characteristic landscape. Now, as we all know, Connect Gen is based in Houston, Texas. It's a young company. And according to their website, they have three wind generation projects and six solar projects in the works. All but two of the solar projects are located in a latitude north of Albany County with less sun than Albany County. Information on the Connect Gen website say they are constructing a two hundred and fifty megawatt solar site on four thousand, four thousand acres in New York State. Based on this information, the applicant could generate the five hundred megawatts they desire by utilizing they could generate five hundred megawatts they desire by utilizing eight thousand acres on this private ranch rather than twenty-six thousand acres they are proposing. Now, it was asked what compromises have been proposed on this project? And yet we get here crickets from Connect Gen. By going to a solar project rather than a wind project, they would eliminate the visual impact, flashing red lights, one hundred foot wide roads for construction, ice throw, safety setbacks, turbine visibility from Vitavu, lightning strikes causing fires, large quantities of water being used for turbine bases, blasting effects on national historic monuments, noise, shadow flicker, large volumes of truck traffic, including sixteen hundred round trips of concrete trucks, massive bird kill and effects on tourism. Question is, as a county commissioner who's reviewing the issue that's dividing this county right now, I believe you have to ask yourself, why is the applicant not propose this compromise? This would be a win-win. As Brad Enzie mentioned, the economic impacts are important. By taking this to solar, it sure makes a lot of people happy. It's a great compromise and I think it's a question that should be asked. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. There were two ladies back here. Yes, you with the dark shirt and the bun and hair, and then the green shirt to the left of you. No, you first and then the, the green shirt next. You go.
Okay, sure. My name is Natalia. My family and I live in Thai Siding, right off of Pumpkinbine Road. We're dedicated conservationists and own three large Wyoming and Laramie businesses, one of which serves over a hundred children in Laramie for essential childcare. Childcare is a threatened industry in our county and our entire country. We strongly oppose the Rail Tie Wind Project. You may remember my children's compelling video, which was shared and viewed thousands of times. They were asking for your help and to update our inadequate regulations and deny Connect Gen's poorly cited industrialization. My daughter mentioned not being able to ride her bike on Pumpkinbine Road. My son wondered, how would he hunt elk on obliterated state land? And my youngest son doesn't give a damn about a paid for school jersey or a game meal. Because let's get real, very minimal state funds that will be driven here will be split across twenty-three counties. And our kids won't actually see this money in a significant way. Also, are we purposely not talking about the other renewable projects approved in our county already? At this point, we're looking forward to becoming a very wealthy industrial armpit. Why is Connect Gen acting like a charity here? Why are we acting so desperate? Ask them what they are making from our backyard. They are cutting us short. We've got seven hundred residents within five miles of this project. The other wind farms already approved have less than a handful of residents negatively impacted. Isn't it curious? We never heard about those projects. That's because they're properly cited and this isn't. Why are we pretending that we need Connect Gen? They are the ones who need us. This is my backyard and this is your backyard too. This is our greatest resource. What happens when you stop protecting us commissioners? Well, then we stop investing in you. Is that a better Albany County? Is that a better Wyoming? You're rich. Great. What happens when you have no one else wanting to invest or live here? What happens when you've got all the school jerseys you want, but you don't have children to wear them to regionals? What happens when we take our essential businesses and we take our children with us? Our children are your future investors. We can't afford to trade dollars for dollars. Protect Albany County's designated primary growth zone, please. We all know there's a housing crisis right now in this town. The Thrive Report indicates that very clearly. We need this developmental opportunity, but not for industrialization. My son, who's sixteen years old, who hasn't even graduated high school, will be seventy years old when this project comes down. Your decision impacts all of us, but it affects my children, my grandchildren and my great grandchildren. Please, please remember my children's grandchildren when you make this decision. In my children's video, they asked you one simple question.
Albany County Commissioners, are you listening? We need your help.
We need your help.
Albany County Commissioners, are you listening? We need your help.
Thirty seconds, please.
I strongly considered leading a loud riot, turning to the crowd and asking everybody to chant, stop rail tie wind. But I'm not going to do that today. With the remaining amount of time that I have, I would ask that everybody stand in solidarity for the South Laramie Valley. And take one minute of silence and prayer to pray for us. Please, God, please help us. Please pray for the next forty years.
Ma'am in the green, you're up to speak, please.
Thank you, Chairman and committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to hear all of our concerns. We're all here today because this is our home. Because we love our home. And this is a really intense issue because for people who are for or against it, this is our home. And I would ask you to stand firm. You're under a lot of pressure right now and I don't envy your positions. Everyone is telling you what to do and how to think and what to say. But that is your job. You're here to represent us and we're depending on you. So no pressure.
Okay.
I personally am strongly against wind power. I think that it's a very bad decision that looks very nice on paper. But even so, I feel that you could not put. A wind turbine installation in a worse place in our county. I have lived in Laramie and Albany County for thirty years. My family moved here from East Texas. I have since graduation lived in Lincoln, Nebraska, Boston, Massachusetts. Columbus, Ohio, a really tiny town in Turkey, Paris, France, and I've traveled other places. And I'm saying that not to show off, but because I've seen a lot of places that maybe used to be like Laramie. But they're not anymore. And we've all seen this in Denver and the Front Range and the I twenty-five corridor. I personally am perhaps an idealist. I think that there are certain things that money can't or perhaps shouldn't buy. And I'm not going to say that it's an easy decision for you guys or easy to balance the budget. But I hope that if I were in your position, I would be able to stand with my ideals and believe that. Nature and the wilderness and this pristine, like frankly, this is. One of the most beautiful places in the world. There's a reason I came back here after all of those travels. I hope that I would put that before whatever money is being offered me. Even if that. That I had to make sacrifices and suffer for it. I would rather. Be in the gutter in a beautiful place than in a high-rise, nicest in the world, surrounded by wind turbines. Thank you.
Thank you. And can I get your name, please?
Yes, I'm so sorry. It's Emma Klute.
Emma Klute, thank you.
Thank you.
And this young lady and then followed by Tim and then we'll go online again.
Hello and thank you for listening to me today. My name is Susie Davis and I live at Fish Creek Ranch. The view is priceless. That's a description that we used to hear on those old MasterCard commercials. Southeast Albany County is forever west. But that's not why I'm here to talk to you today. What is the monetary value of people's homes? What is the monetary value of people's lives? To be rather crude about it, how will this affect Albany County's tax base when you lose, say, a hundred homes because of wildfires? There are one hundred eighty-three Wyoming residential parcels. Within five miles of this site. There is two hundred parcels in Colorado that they don't even get to come and talk with you. This is a five mile radius of the rail tile wind project. Tremendously more than five or ten within the same radius at the other wind turbine sites. In our county, five or ten homes, not one hundred eighty-three homes. Have you truly considered how tall these turbines are? Three times taller than the tallest building on campus. You need to imagine that. These giant towers not only attract lightning, they create lightning on their own. This is documented. It is researched and you have that information. Almanier has provided that to you as have others. Do you not remember what it was like last summer with the fires, with the ash falling from the sky? What it was like to be have the wildfires west of us? The southwest corner of the rail tie wind project comes close to bordering Fish Creek Ranch. Which links to Boulder Ridge, Corral Springs and to the south, the Roosevelt National Forest. These wooded areas are filled with dead trees. Highly combustible material that due to past drought and beetle kill are just ready for the burning. Once a prairie is disturbed, this huge, by this huge construction project. Native perennial grasses and sage will not return. It is proven. What will grow back will be the invasive annual cheat grass. Cheat grass. Grows each year. It dies with the heat of the summer. As dead, it is very flammable. Lightning is attracted and are created by turbines may strike the ground twelve to fifteen miles beyond the rail tie wind site. Twelve to fifteen miles. This is documented information. Three hundred eighty Wyoming homes are within five miles of this. And lightning wouldn't even be the necessary to start a tragic fire. Turbine nacelles catch on fire. It's a fact. Connect Gen does not even include fire suppression systems in their turbines. Despite the recommendation of the manufacturer. Apparently, southeast Albany County isn't worth it.
Could you wrap it up, please?
Yes. Additionally, we live in a plot of south subdivision. We pay property taxes. And there's a small, very dedicated volunteer fire department up on Boulder Ridge. But they can't fight structured fires. They are not permitted to do so. And if we have a structured fire, the Laramie Fire Department has to come down. What if we can't get out? There's only one road from Boulder Ridge down to Cherokee Park. Down to twenty-seven. If that is blocked by roadwork, is blocked by machinery, we are stuck. We become a number, a tragic number of people who might perish. As a county commissioner, your first duty is to the safety of your constituents. We deserve the protection over the almighty dollar promised by an out of state company that to date has never built a wind farm. They do not know what will happen with six hundred ninety-five foot towers in a high altitude Wyoming climate. They have no experience. Why are we considering being Connect Gen's guinea pigs? Why are, why contemplating letting them destroy southeast Albany County? The bottom line is Wyoming lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Tim Sullivan. I'm a resident of Albany County. My grandparents came here in nineteen oh five. I was going to. The comprehensive plan and I don't know whether you participated in generating this particular document, anybody on the board. But that went on for several years. Talks about. It's a guiding tool for landing, land use planning and zoning. And one of the primary reasons or one of the primary topics in there, it's chapter seven, is open space. And I'm not going to talk anymore about that. I could have talked all night, but I'm going to leave it at that. When I was a young kid, we had a family friend. He was a county commissioner and something stuck to me at that time. And he said that wouldn't you make a decision at the county level that changes land use? You can't think about what the economic benefits are going to be in the next year or five years. You need to think out fifty years, seventy years, hundred years. And that's what we're talking about here. Once this is built, it's going to destroy. What we recognize in southern Albany County, that beautiful vista driving into Laramie coming from the Colorado line. And also the lights that you're going to see and I challenge all three of you to go up to Rock River at night. And look at the wind turbines up there and see what the red flashing lights. Are going to look like in southern Albany County. I'm not against wind, but I am in southern Albany County. And the other thing is, is I was on the Board of County Commissioners, as you may know. And anyway, we had a cell tower that we were going to put out on Highway one thirty. And I asked the planning commission if they would move, ask the union telephone. Move that cell tower just off the ridge on. Millbrook Road. And they said no. And then I tried to convince the other two commissioners to, to get that moved back a hundred and fifty feet. So it wouldn't be in the view shed because that's going to be there forever. And it is. And every time I go out there, I just, it drives me crazy when I see that stupid cell tower. And it was totally unnecessary, like these. I've got thirty seconds. And so basically what we're talking about is when I drive out Centennial, it's a beautiful drive and I equate it to like a beautiful woman. Until I see that cell tower. But if we build this down here, southern Albany County is a beautiful spot and beautiful vistas. We're going to have lights that you're going to be able to see from Centennial Valley, or not Centennial Valley, but out by. Elk Mountain or Dome and Sheep Mountain and all of Albany County from I eighty to two eighty-seven. And what it's going to be is our beautiful woman that we're looking at down south. Is going to look like somebody that was ravaged by the worst case of smallpox you've ever seen in your life. And it's going to be destroyed forever. So I encourage you to think about this. This is a seventy-five, a hundred year process that you're talking about and don't take it lightly. And also the other thing is, is these things don't last forever and they have to be. Removed and reclaimed. And the state has passed some statutes that they were going to bond for these. But it's just going to be like the abandoned orphan wells that we have and all the other counties around the state run into the same problem. The state can't do it and it falls back on the county and it's going to fall on the county in the future years. To, to take these out and reclaim the property. Thank you very much for your time and I know it's not an easy decision. So I've been there.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And we'll go online here. I think Catell Miss dropped off. So Abby Kersey, you're up first, followed by. Arun Dathia Nair. Sorry, I just butchered that, but Abby, three minutes, the floor is yours, please.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Gozar and Commissioner Ibera N. Richardson. My name is Abby Kersey. I'm an upcoming senior at the Laramie High School where I'm a varsity tennis and basketball player. I chose to speak in support of the rail tie wind project and to show support for the approving the application. I'm interested in renewable energy and I think this is a great project for our town and also our schools as well. We travel around the state and see what energy has done for Sheridan, Natrona and Campbell Counties. Also, in the last few years, we have seen what wind has done for our state, Laramie and Carbon Counties. Albany County is a perfect location for this project and what it will bring to Laramie and our community. And some of the articles in the Boomerang and listening to some of the discussions by the people opposed to the project. They have indicated that we are ruining the land for my generation. I do not feel this way and I felt like it was important to speak about, speak about my generation. We are about clean, efficient energy. Wind turbines are not ugly. They are carbon neutral. They bring efficient and clean energy and they are also progress. Progress for my future, my generation and provide much needed school funding. It is crazy how long the process can take, but I'm glad we are close and can begin to reap the benefits. Of what wind power provides to a town the size of Laramie. This impact on our local economy is a benefit, but we also get to be a part of the change. I really don't understand the view shed argument. They provide a great landscape and so many wide open spaces. They do truly look like they belong in Wyoming. We have one of the greatest wind sources in the United States. Wind isn't if it happens, it is happening and I hope we are a part of the progress. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kersey. Arun Dathia Nair, three minutes, floor is yours, followed by Terry Cameron.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So my name is Arun Nair. I just, I'm finishing up my freshman year of college and I've lived in Laramie all my life. I just wanted to speak a little bit to a, a different perspective as well. So more and more, we've been seeing the negative effects or seeing the effects of climate change. Of limited revenue streams, not just on the economy, but more importantly on the Wyoming people. And as a young Wyoming myself, I think I speak for a lot of us when I say that we want to live in a, in a state that will face these problems head on. And that means listening to science. That means pursuing projects like the rail tie wind project and working with companies like Connect Gen. We want to live in a Wyoming that will continue to have opportunities for its youth and one that will choose to be proactive. Instead of reactive like we've been seeing all these years. And part of being proactive is taking initiative on projects like this one, which would lead us to a more promising future. And I for one, hope that my state and my county will be a part of that. We want to see Albany County and Wyoming grow and have a diversified economy. And seeing undertakings like the rail tie wind project is so incredibly encouraging. And personally for me, when I see more and more windmills cropping up around the state, around the state. I see it as a beacon of hope more than anything else. Hope that our representatives and public officials are taking our concerns seriously. And that they're making the right decisions to ensure a better future for our state, county and people. So thank you so much for your time and I hope that you choose to grant the permit for the project.
Thank you, Arun. Next up, Terry Cameron, followed by Frederick Ames. Terry, the floor is yours, three minutes, please. And if you're trying to talk, Terry, we still have you on mute. Terry, we'll come back to you. Frederick Ames, you're up next. The floor is yours, Frederick.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Again, my name is Fred Ames and I live in northeastern Massachusetts. And I have had the pleasure of coming out to Laramie. And meeting some of you and, and seeing the pride that you have in your state. Being from Massachusetts is very congested. There's a road sign every fifty feet. It was a real pleasure to come out and see the wide open spaces of Wyoming and I hope to get back. There are many people, you know, across the country like myself. Who are concerned about the Ames Monument and. I guess it's sort of a handicap in this situation that my last name is Ames to think that. You know, I'm just concerned about my family's name, but it's, it's a lot more than that. It, it has to do with. A significant monument that is really part of the landscape. And I know I've, I've addressed that before, but it's true. It's really part of nature, it's built from the stones nearby. And it would be a real loss with these towers. So now, tonight, someone said there are no negative impacts to the Rail Tie Project. However, I read the WAPA Environmental Impact Study, and that states that the Ames Monument will be impacted negatively by the 650-foot-high ocean turbines and recommended that mitigation efforts be made. Now, I'm just going to leave a question for Connect Gen. And that would be, do they have any intention to follow that recommendation? And as far as I know, and what I've read about from them, is that so far, they have given no indication that they will. So I would urge them not to roll their eyes about this and think it's some sort of quixotic, which is sort of ironic, isn't it, quixotic? Little old lady in tennis shoes sort of thing. But this is a, this is a serious issue that really has an impact on the quality of life. And again, I very much want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I think this has been a very good meeting, there have been some very, very good speakers raising some very serious questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ames. Mr. Cameron, I see that your video is on, or the floor is yours if you'll unmute, and you have three minutes.
Now I should be unmuted, yes?
Okay, gotcha, loud and clear, three minutes, Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, thank you for the time this evening. Yes, we've, we've heard a lot of argumentation, both positive and negative. We are in the project area. After much deliberation over a year, we decided to go ahead and we signed a lease with Connect Gen. And I believe the reason was not to benefit ourselves so much, but looking at for the whole. I mean, and the whole is the United States, the state of Wyoming, and the county of Albany. And as we go into the 21st century, producing and making available clean, affordable, secure energy in the U.S., it's a huge, huge issue. And I think wind has to be part of it. I had 45 years in the oil field. Every time I showed up with a drilling rig, I had not maybe this many people opposing me, but many, many. And yet, without fossil fuels, we probably wouldn't be the country we are today. So I guess, in short, it gets down to who's ox is getting gored. I mean, is it the view of 200 people, the view shed? Or is it the benefits for the country, the state, and the county? So I'm, after a lot of deliberation and bringing our adult children into the discussion, we are in favor of it. So thank you for the time this evening. I hope you approve it, and it's time to quit kicking the can down the aisle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. And Mr. Ames, your hand is still up. That'll be confusing for me, I've got to tell you. The final online would be Travis Brown, and then we'll go here to the room. Travis?
Hi there. Yep, can you guys hear me?
I can't hear you, go ahead, and state your name, please.
My name is Travis Brown. On his name, I just wanted to speak quickly about the idea. Or we previously purchased a home in Roundhouse Project Area about less than two years ago. And within that time, a wind turbine farm grew all around us. And then we just recently sold our home. We were very worried about the sale of our home due to the wind project and all the turbines. However, we were able to get a full offer in seven days from listing and 17% higher than we purchased without any improvements to the home. I'd want to say that.
We will come back to you under the name Travis Brown, and we'll try to get that finished out. There's a gentleman here in the blue suit that has been wanting to speak, so please. I wish I knew, and then we'll go here. Young lady in the tan, and then a black sweatshirt, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gosar, members of the Commission. My name is Paul Cow, and I'm a lawyer from Cheyenne, Wyoming, who, together with Connie Brooks, a person far more experienced in environmental and regulatory law than me, we represent the Albany County Conservancy in opposition to this project. Earlier today, we filed a position paper electronically, and I hand-delivered three copies for your reading pleasure. Take it home with you. I'm sure you'll enjoy it. But in any case, it says better than anything I'm going to do tonight. You've got it. There you go. It does better than I will tonight to lay out the Conservancy's position. You know, at the outset, and I'm going to try to make this quick, but I'm a lawyer, and it's hard to just talk for three minutes. You know, the Conservancy respects Connections' right to try to do business. It respects these landowners' right to try to develop their property, make some money off of it. But we have to draw the line when the project exceeds the scope of the law, what little law we really have on these things in Wyoming, and when it does harm to others. I'm going to just talk about the legal aspects of this. Now, like I say, I personally don't think Wyoming has a lot of, a lot of regulations when it comes to wind farms. I think that's why so many come to Wyoming, we're a cheap date. But we do have some, and Albany County has got regulations. And one of the biggies here with Connect Gen is financial assurance. Now, the county regs and the Industrial Siting Council regs in Wyoming statute, they do make provisions and require that entities like Connect Gen provide financial assurances. And it's supposed to go for a number of things, but one of which is to deal with decommissioning and site reclamation standards. In other words, if it all goes to hell, somebody's got to take it down. And they need to put up financial assurances that that'll get done. And we know in Wyoming, we see it every year. We have a business that comes in, sometimes we even give them money as incentive, and they do something and they go bankrupt. And the assurances, the bonding or the insurance policy, isn't enough to cover remediation or reclamation. Well, that's what this statute is supposed to do. It's supposed to protect Albany County from footing the bill if something like that ever happens. Well, in Connections' case, as best we can tell, as far as the WEX permit is concerned, they have just simply stated that financial assurance is sufficient for complete decommissioning and reclamation of the project at the end of its life, at the end of its useful life. They realize that they've got that obligation, and that's all they've said. As far as the Siting Council, all they do is reference a letter of credit from Quantum. That's far from the bonding and the assurances that these statutes call for. I mean, I invite you, since we've only got 30 seconds more, you know, get on the internet and look at what Connect Gen is. It's true. They've only got three operating projects, and I couldn't decide if they've built them or not. They have nine other projects in the works, and only two are wind. I mean, are they a company that's even going to build this project? Or are they just going to get the permit, get the project set together, and then sell it? I mean, when you look in their website, everything's a platform, one platform for another platform. Are the people that you're talking to now, are they going to be the people that you're going to be talking to when you go, wait a minute? These other guys said they were going to do this, you're not doing it. Food for thought.
Thank you, Mr. Cow, I appreciate it. Please, there's a guy standing, and then the gentleman. Yep, and then you in the black hoodie, please. Nope, no, okay.
Chairman Gosar, Commissioners Richardson and Ibarra, thank you for hearing all of us tonight. I appreciate your commitment to transparent and open process. My name is Katie Ogden. I live here in Laramie, I've lived here since 2006. I'm born and raised in Wyoming in production agriculture and agribusiness. I am not a wealthy, non-resident landowner. I'm not a telecommuter. I'm not a person who came here to retire from far away. I'm a person who's chosen to build a life and a business here at what I believe is probably some economic sacrifice. So I would argue that the economic benefits of this project far outweigh the potential risks or downside. I also stand before you as a member of the Albany County Fair Board, and I have been through the county budget process, and I don't envy the decisions that you have to make on an annual basis to fund our government. I also don't see any comparable development proposals. On the horizon, I did hear another gentleman mention the Serious Guy Technology Park, which, you know, I think is fantastic also, except for the fact that it's empty, and the only business that is housed there was already in Laramie, at least to my knowledge, and I'm happy to be corrected about that if I'm wrong. But I think that it would be an egregious dereliction of duty to vote against this permit application. And it's my understanding that the applicant is entitled to the rules as they're written, so long as they're compliant. So it's also my belief that the Commission doesn't necessarily have subjective veto power on this. So I would encourage you to vote in favor and carry out your responsibility to the residents of this county.
Thank you, Ms. Ogden. I see this gentleman here with a Purdue sweatshirt on, I believe that's it. And then there's, no, this one, and then you. Thank you. State your name, please.
My name is John Black. I have actually never come to one of these things before. I was driving by and saw all the signs and thought I'd come by and see what was going on. I know a lot of people that are being affected by this, and not in a good way. I know that this is a very lucrative deal for Wyoming, but it's just for the state, it's not for the people. People are going to lose their houses, their land, their livelihoods. I do a lot of riding up in the snowy, green mountain area, and there are some wind farms you can see from Green Mountain, and it's not like they're right here, they're way out there. That's just horrific. You know, when I moved to Wyoming, I didn't even know where Wyoming was. I didn't even know that Wyoming existed. And now that I do know that it exists, I want it to stay the way it is. So I have one thing left to say, and if you guys do vote for this, and it does go through, and it does go to shit, excuse my language, how are you going to be able to sleep at night knowing that you could have stopped it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Albany County Commissioners, thank you for your time, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Todd Schmidt, longtime Albany County resident. And tonight, all feelings and emotions aside, I'd just like to speak to wind energy in general and ask the question, have we really considered economic and environmental costs? What are the costs economically and environmentally? And after decades of supposed new technology and billions of dollars in subsidies, solar and wind energy combined still only provide less than 2% of the world's energy. Less than 2% of the world's energy. You might think, hey, wind energy, it's free and it's plentiful, but it's not. Wind is free, and we might think in Albany County, we'd like to have less of that wind, that free stuff. But although wind is free, the process to turn wind energy into usable energy on a mass scale is far from free. Compared to fossil fuels and nuclear power, wind energy is very expensive. Problem is, wind energy is weak, and the technical term is dilute and unreliable. The technical term for that is intermittent. As to the dilutinous problem, unlike coal and oil, wind doesn't deliver concentrated energy. To provide wind energy, you need high-performance compounds for turbine blades and the rare-earth metal neodymium for specialty magnets. And these are very expensive to manufacture or to mine. And I want to note that this first part of my research comes from Alex Epstein of the Center for Industrial Progress. As to the intermittency problem, it's worse than the dilutinous problem. News flash, the wind, even in Albany County and Laramie, doesn't blow all the time. The only way for wind energy to be truly useful would be if we could store the energy to be available when we need it. No such storage system exists. That's why in the world, there is not one real or proposed independent freestanding wind power plant. Not one. All of them require backup. What's the backup? Fossil fuels. And switching back and forth from fossil fuels to wind energy is costly. There's no free lunch, and there's no free energy. My second part of my research is from a senior fellow at the Manhattan Institute, Mark Mills. Again, we need energy all the time, and wind energy cannot provide it. We're told the solution is we need to use batteries. Physics and chemistry make this very difficult to do. Consider the biggest battery factory that was built by Tesla in Nevada. It would take 500 years for that factory to make enough batteries to store one day's worth of America's electricity needs. How about the environment? Is your motive to protect the environment? Building a single 100-megawatt wind farm can power 75,000 homes, but it requires 30,000 tons of iron ore, 50,000 tons of concrete, and 900 tons of non-recyclable plastics for the huge blades. Massive new mining operations would be required if we're going to go forward with wind energy. Where will it all come from? Not necessarily from America. That mining, much of it will come from places hostile to America, like China. What about the waste? Wind turbines have a lifespan of only about 20 years. Conventional energy machines like gas turbines last twice as long. With current plans, the International Renewable Energy Agency calculates that worn-out wind turbines will add millions of tons of more waste. We know that all the wind turbine blades are going to the Casper landfill in Wyoming because they're unrecyclable. The following comparison is instructive, I think. It costs about the same to drill one oil well as it does to build one giant wind turbine. While the wind turbine generates the energy equivalent of about one barrel of oil per hour, the oil rig produces about 10 barrels per hour. It costs less than $0.50 to store a barrel of oil or its equivalent in natural gas. You need $200 worth of batteries to hold the energy contained in one oil barrel. So is wind energy the magical solution to our energy needs? No. Is wind energy green? Absolutely not. Wyoming doesn't need more wind turbines to disturb the pristine landscapes and the environment. You know, there's good reason that we abandoned the idea of wind energy as a viable energy source for meeting our country's ever-burgaining energy needs over 100 years ago. There's a reason we abandoned that.
Please wrap it up, Mr. Richardson, thank you.
Sure, wind energy is not the energy of the future, not now, not forever, thanks.
Thank you. This will be the last one on, in person, we'll go online, and then I'm going to focus over here, because all the people came from this side last time.
I'll try to keep this to three minutes.
Okay. And I'll try to start the clock right.
My name is Sherry Birch. I'm the first house in the state of Wyoming.
Hello, the video, the audio is down on the Zoom.
I can't hear either.
Hello, the audio is down.
Thank you. We're working on it.
After calling about 25 attorneys, I was finally told that what was happening to me, there was nothing illegal about it. I don't have a case for nuisance. So I just had to sit there and eat dirt and vibration and trucks at all hours of the day. I finally got ahold of somebody at Industrial Siding Council, and Brian Lovett became my only advocate in this. But he didn't have much power to do anything. Next Era came in and put speed limit signs, but it was up to me to enforce it. They didn't provide any enforcement. And now that they are operating, you know, they said it would let up, but just last week at 5:40 in the morning, I had six semis going past my house. It is still an ongoing industrial site. Six months into the operation, a turbine 3,000 feet from my house caught fire. It took 25 minutes for just the command vehicle from our volunteer fire department to get there. That wasn't to get another 20 minutes around to that turbine. And I truly fear that if something were to happen to the one directly west of me in August, nobody can convince me I'm safe at this point. I mean, it is real. They say it's rare, but six months in, I have a text from an employee of Next Era because I keep asking for an investigation of what caused the fire. And they keep saying, nothing's been generated yet. Nothing's been generated yet. But in one of the texts, he said, too much wind here. And then shortly after, he texted me and says, please don't disclose that to anybody. They had five years of meteorological studies they put towers up for. And now I'm left. I have cracks in my foundation that weren't there six months, a year ago. I have grout cracking. I have countertops separating. Nobody provided any vibration monitoring. And now it's up to me, before they start Phase Two, to figure out how I can afford to get professional vibration monitoring on my house because it's not specified for them to do so. It's up to me to provide proof that all of a sudden I'm waking up at 2:00 in the morning and I'm hearing noises that sounds like somebody's driving down my driveway. They were really proud about saying, oh, these turbines only prevent, provide, you know, it's 55 decibels outside of this ring. But in what conditions? They don't tell you that. They don't tell you it's certain wind conditions. One to the west of me sounds like bass drum. I now have, multiple times a year, I get the blade flicker. And like the other lady that said, I live in a very remote location. I don't have window covers. But they said, oh, we'll get you blackout curtains. And so now it's, I should put up curtains to mitigate a known nuisance. And if you sit in your house for 45 minutes and blink the lights every three seconds, it's nauseating, even being out in my yard. When a blade comes at you, you're...
Could you wrap it up, please, Sherry? Thank you.
Yes. There is no oversight after they're up and running. I have no one to take my complaints to. I have trash in my yard, lots of trash. And I've been working on it a month. They said they'd come clean it up, but it's all over the place. I have absolute knowledge that it affects the wildlife in my area. I can see it by what has changed around me. And this is in a study where they come out an hour a day. I'm there all the time. And I can see the absolute changes that have happened with the wildlife in my yard. So I'm not necessarily against wind. But I think that you should think really long and hard about the effects that it will create on the non-participating households around it because they are real. I'm not trying to be a hypochondriac. I don't want to be a victim. I just, everything has been put on me to prove that I am feeling these things and I am sensing these things and I am seeing these things. I have no protection. I have nobody to back me up.
Thank you, Sherry. Appreciate it. So by my count, that was the fifth in person. So we'll go to five online. Savannah Cox, followed by somebody at Davidson Cannon. Savannah, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Savannah. I'm a doctorate student studying biochemistry at Montana State. I grew up here in Laramie and my family lives here. And so I care about the economic diversity of our city. I'm pretty passionate about the positive effects of windmills, and I support the Rail Tie Project. I kind of wanted to rebuttal some arguments that were made earlier on in this meeting. So some negative impacts I heard, and I feel like I'm educated enough to speak out on, is that they ruin the landscape, they're noisy, they kill birds and hawks, and threat of tourism decrease. And according to a group of psychologists at Martin Luther University, a lot of these complaints I just mentioned mainly arise from those who are against wind turbines in the first place. I quote, "It is notable that the people who continue to have the biggest problem with wind turbines were those who were already very critical of the wind farm," unquote. I personally love driving by the wind turbines. I think they do add beauty to the landscape. I'm just in awe of them for the many benefits that people have said throughout this meeting. The argument that they make noise, they give off a sound pressure of 43 decibels. Air conditioners can reach 50 decibels. Most refrigerators run about 40 decibels. The death of animals argument. In Wyoming, the birds killed happen to be eagles, hawks, and bats, and that is terrible because they are rodent eaters. But I wanted to point out that I too lived on a ranch where we once had a rodent problem and with no wind turbines in sight, and we got cats. Concerning tourism, I will say that there is definitely not enough evidence for anyone to make the point-blank statement that windmills will hurt our tourism economy. These are the facts that I have studied for, or looked at over the years. Laramie has also been so fixed on little amounts of revenue. We're in dire straits if we do not find a way to diversify our economy. Wind energy is also helping the fight in climate change. It does not give off carbon dioxide emissions. It's still creating jobs and providing an economic development in rural communities. So whether you're for or against climate change, believe in it or not, the fact of the matter is that we need another form of energy. Think of the long term, as many people have said here, think of long term. This can only benefit us. Wind power is the up-and-coming new kid on the block, and I support it. I support the advancement of it here in Laramie, especially in areas that have been extensively studied, on the best place to put them. The pros far outweigh the cons for wind turbines. Thank you.
Thank you, Savannah. Next up, Davidson Cannon, a gentleman named Stuart, and then Leslie Young. Stuart, I'm not sure if that's your first or last name, but the floor is yours. Three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Gosar. My name is Mark Stewart. I'm with Davidson Cannon, and I'm speaking on behalf of Monahan Farms. Thank you and to yourself and to the commissioners for the holding this hearing. Monahan Farms is a budding property owner. They own property around the butts and adjoins the northwest portion of the project area. And we join with others' comments about the concerns about the destruction of the view shed and converting what is essentially now a rural landscape into a de facto industrial landscape. We also echo and support Mr. Cap's comments about the financial assurances and share his concerns about Connection flipping this project. More specifically, you're tasked with determining whether or not to approve this permit. And under the wind regulations, under the wind regulations approved by Albany County, you can only do that if you make some certain findings. One of those, and I want to address two specifics. You have to make a finding that the applicant has minimized nuisances for light, glare, heat, noise, vibration, odor, fumes, and smoke that may affect off-site property owners. They have not done that, and it's demonstrated in the documents they've submitted with their application. If you look at figures one through three in their shadow flicker submission, you'll see that the shadow flicker extends far off over onto adjoining property owners and in excess of what they call the 30-year, the 30-hour-per-year industry standard. The industry standard is not Albany County standard. Albany County requires that they minimize that nuisance. Minimum means the minimum, the least amount that can be attained. And in this case, by removing and setting back those towers that about those properties, that nuisance can be eliminated. Zero is the minimum, and that's what needs to be achieved here. What they've supplied and what they have submitted in their application simply doesn't meet that. The second one I want to address is noise. Albany County actually has a 55-decibel standard set for that. But if you'll look at figure two there, from Connection's sound study, you'll see that the 55-decibel exceedance, 55-decibel contours extend onto Monahan property. That indicates, and their own submission shows, that they do not meet the 55-decibel limit at the property line. Simply can't. It occurs on other portions of the property as well. But as submitted by the applicant now, you cannot make the necessary findings that you need to make in order to approve this permit. We'd ask that you look at those things very carefully and not just take the staff's report on that. Examine those figures for yourselves and ask that you deny this permit as it's presented today. And if I have any time left, I'd answer any questions if you have any.
Doesn't appear to be any questions. Mr. Stewart, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next up, Leslie Young, followed by Carol Wiles.
Chairman Gosar and Commissioners, I'm a little sick and I've lost my voice, so please bear with me. I promise I'll keep this brief. My name is Leslie Young, and I'm a local business owner in Laramie. I want to show my support for the Rail Tie Wind Project and ask for the Commissioners to approve this application. I believe this project has obvious economic benefits that it will bring to local businesses, schools, our community in town. Laramie needs to look at new industry, and I believe wind power makes sense. In addition to that, I have personally witnessed that Connection is a good community partner as they've invested in several needed programs. They created a program connecting local schoolchildren and the frontline hospital workers with local restaurants during COVID. And they have partnered with many organizations and school programs to assist and support. Supporting them will attract more businesses like Connection to come in and join our downtown and our business community. Thank you so much for your time, and please vote tonight in support of the Rail Tie Wind Project.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Thank you.
Next up, Carol Wiles, followed by Mike Massey, and then we'll go to in-person. Carol, the floor is yours. Three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm reluctant to say that I owned land in Wyoming for 20 years and lived in Thai siding. And I no longer live there out of a desire to be close to grandkids. But I am very concerned about the siding of this project. I'm very concerned about the young adults in your community who act like this is opposing wind development in the county. The county has wind development that is ongoing near Rock River. Lucky Star and Two Rivers had no opposition at your county meetings. Why is that? It was better sited. This project is wrongly sited. And if you make the huge mistake to go forward with this project, I would ask you to consider these things. If this project does not qualify for ADLS lighting per the FAA regulations, it should be a no-go. You have that in your regulations. You can say, no ADLS, we're a no-go. You should be concerned about work hours. I am very happy that you heard from Sherry Birch and her very real concerns about the limits of, if someone was building an industrial business next to a residence, you would have rules about lighting and how often they could work. And that's not what's happening here. Have you looked at, will they be allowed to have their workers camp on Boulder Ridge in the National Forest in Vitavu? Therefore, taking over, those workers could take over all recreational sites during construction. Well, should the workers be bused in? If you go forward with this project, there are very real limits that you should put on this construction process that would preserve the integrity of that site. I urge you not to approve this project, but I urge you to move carefully and thoughtfully with all that you've heard. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Ms. Wiles. And the final online in this round, Mr. Massey, Mike Massey, the floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason that we're talking about this wind project tonight is because of climate change. If climate change weren't occurring, I doubt very seriously we'd be talking about wind development. But we can't deal with wind, we can't deal with climate change without wind development. There's no scenario to successfully deal and to mitigate the changes that are occurring to our climate without wind. Now, one of the options is not to have wind go away, to turn this project down and to somehow have everything stay the same for the next 30 or 40 years. That's not going to happen with climate change. We got a taste of what Laramie Valley and Albany County is going to be with climate change last summer with two wildfires that filled this valley full of smoke. The future is also means less snow in the mountains, less water for irrigation. It means degradation of our streams and our fisheries. It also means degradation of wildlife habitat. You're not going to bring tourists to Albany County under those kinds of conditions. So we have to be realistic about what the future is. The entire point of having wind development is to preserve all those things. It's to preserve the wildlife and the view. It's to preserve ranching. It's to preserve the snows in the mountains and our forests. So the important point here is, is that wind is an important part of our future. Now, the question is, is this where it should be developed, in this particular place? And the county, as well as the state, the federal government have come up through the rulemaking process with rules and regulations to determine what the answer to that is. with rules and regulations to determine what the answer to that is. And in response to that, the company has submitted a thirteen-hundred-page document which looks at seventeen different resources which have been defined by law as being significant to review. And in all those cases, based upon the standards that are being employed and commonly accepted, especially with regard to our experience in other wind development projects, indeed, the impacts have been, are under standards. The impacts are not adversely affecting. And in fact, contrary to what the attorney said a couple of speakers ago, zero does not mean minimum. Minimum means minimum. And as a result, in many of these cases, these impacts indeed are being minimized or there's agreements in place to do that. With regard to vistas, I think it's important to know that this project is being conducted on private land. Now, that doesn't mean that the private landowner can do anything he wants to with that land. As I mentioned, through rule of law, we have identified resources which have put a limit to that. However, when it comes down to vistas in private land, the way to preserve vistas is through scenic easements. If we go beyond what the regulations state as to what government should be doing, then we are indeed infringing upon the private rights here. So in weighing the balance between the benefits and the cost, I would urge that the county commissioners approve this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. And the young lady in the red mask, please, you've been so patient.
All right. Well, hi, county commissioners and thank you, Chair. My name is Kelly Schroder and I am here tonight to ask you to support the Rail Tie Wind Project. So I was born and raised here in Laramie, but I left after high school, like so many of our young people do. I felt that Laramie was a stagnant place and there was no opportunity here for me. I have an educational background in environmental policy and city planning, so I know that this is a tough decision. I know that we want to protect our environment. We want to find sources of clean energy. And we also want to listen to the public comment and take that comment into consideration as we make these decisions, these tough decisions. I moved back here last year during the pandemic. But unlike those who have moved here because of the great views and, you know, it's a nice place to be when the world is going crazy, I actually moved back here because I want to make a difference in my hometown and I want to make this a better place to live for future generations. And I believe that we can't be putting nature in a box. We can't act like it's something, you know, separate from who we are and separate from, you know, our daily activities and what we do. This area where the project is proposed is not a pristine area. It is not a wilderness area. We've already heard that from several folks tonight. And there's significant development in the area, which makes this, in my opinion, a good location for a wind project. We know that developments have impacts. I'm not saying that this project isn't going to have an impact on the views or the environment or any of these other things that we've heard about. But I do believe that the benefits far outweigh the impacts. First, with climate change. So we are running out of time to act on this. This is something that has been stated in several different ways, several different times over the last several years, and the time is now. The New York Times just released an analysis a couple of days ago with a map showing where wind energy needs to be developed in order to meet our climate goals by 2050. And Albany County is right in the middle of where all of that wind energy development needs to take place. I fear that climate change, actually, I know that climate change has a far greater or will have a far greater impact on the things that we care about, like the views and our wildlife than this development specifically will do. So climate change will exacerbate the chance of wildfire in the area. It will, you know, reduce the, losing my words here, the habitat area for the animals that we love so much. And furthermore, as we've heard, there's several economic benefits to our community through this project. So I'll just wrap up by saying I'm really excited about this project. I'm excited to be back in Laramie, excited to be here. And I feel like it's a step in the right direction for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. Phil, I've got you coming up and then, yes, Al, I think it's you back there. Thank you.
Hazard with these things and hearing aids. Commissioner, Chairman Gosar, Commissioner Richardson and Rivera, thank you for having us here live. It's nice to be here and I'm not going to blow that far, but if I did, I've been vaccinated, so don't worry about it. I'm here to talk, speaking on behalf of myself. As you know, our law firm does represent many of the people in this room. And my partner is paid to be here. I'm here because I'm, I was and I still consider myself a policymaker. And I really wanted to jump in right after my colleague Mike Massey spoke because frankly, it shows you a difference in part about who we represented. And Mr. Mike represented a different constituent than I did. As it turns out, most of the folks in this room voted for me for twenty years. Four, twenty-four years, if you add four years as the hospital district. I also served on the Planning Commission before I was in that role. City Planning Commission, I participated in developing one of the original master plans for Albany or for Laramie, which would, by the way, had residential development all along pile and knob. And over time, living in this community, I've changed my opinions and developed my opinions partly because of my constituencies. I've balanced budgets for over twenty years. For ten of those years, I was responsible for the largest budget in the state of Wyoming and balanced it every year. I was on tax two thousand. I understand the tax consequences and I would love to spend a whole day with you talking about the essence of bases that people have up and challenged. Many of them frankly are wrong. Wyoming, Albany County does have a low assessed valuation. Nobody's challenged that. But you know, it's richest, it's a rich community when it comes to people. Our biggest asset is the people that commit the state. Right sitting over here, there's almost a seven to eight billion dollar capital facility. Add it to one point five billion just during the time that I was in the session. The state of Wyoming contributes four hundred million dollars a biennium to operate this that goes in and feeds your county here. What the state asks for in return, and what does it, by the way, the state give you? It provides revenue enhancements. It provides an allocation of federal mineral royalties. It put all taxes throughout the state to Albany County, understanding that it does not have assessed valuation. What does it ask for you in return and us? It asks that we be a good host to the University of Wyoming and create a community where people want to come, go to, become educated and hopefully stay here and develop new businesses and economic development. I submit to you that this project is inconsistent with that role and in long term, it will not meet that. When you look at the tools that you have, the given, to make this decision, it's very hard when you have friends on both sides come to you and tell you which way to go. But when you look behind you and you look at the community, you've already made this decision. Each one of these people asked for a permit. They got permission from you to build a residence. And when you granted that permit, you promised them that you will consider them in the next decision. These people have pre-existing rights and their right is to the scenery and the vision. We knew that we were going to have a challenge. The reason this company is here is because I've helped vote a bill in that gives them a tax reduction to be here. But we also went and said laid out corridors for connector lines so that they would not go to where it is the least cost to them. They're coming to this point, this place because it's least cost. We have forty-five hundred square miles of property in Albany County. We have nearly a hundred thousand square miles in the state. We've identified wind areas throughout the state. This is not a decision of whether or not we're going to maximize the capacity, the takeaway capacity of wind energy in the state of Wyoming. It's the question of where it goes. Governor Friedthall commissioned a committee, a commission to go out and identify the assets in every community in advance that are worth saving. In Albany County, we identified two areas. The snowy range and southeast Wyoming corridor where these folks live. These people were attracted there because of the scenic virtues of that community. When you walk into my house, you see the first photo you'll see is Devil's Tower. My grandmother grew up with looking out the back door at Devil's Tower. The next one you'll see is the Teton Range where you grew up in, Commissioner Gosar, and where I grew up skiing. The next one is the Wind Rivers where I grew up, as well as you did on the other side. And then you walk up and there's a picture of Vitavu. For many of us, that draws us there. Many people will look at a windmill and love it. Many people will hate it. But that's not your decision here today. These folks were here first. And this area was identified before this community, this company came as unique and worthwhile keeping. The company has plenty of areas to go lease other areas for wind. And all you have to decide is, is simply, in this instance, our regulations understand and recognize that people that were there first, and for those areas that we identified first as being unique,
Please wrap it up.
cannot consume that. Thank you.
And then there's a striped shirt that I can just see the arm in this. You'll be after Al. Thank you.
Thank you for going into the night, Mr. Chairman. My name's Al Manir. I think you'll all be relieved to know that I'm not going to try to squeeze the twenty-page letter into three minutes. I hope you will read it. I want you to know that I and like Mitch Edwards are dead serious about the concern for there being no conditional use permit in this project, but in the time I have, let me focus on one simple thing. I want to go back to Hermosa Road for a minute. I don't think the people on Hermosa Road have any idea what's coming. First thing that's going to happen, according to the Department, the environmental impact statement is, Hermosa Road is going to wind up being a hundred feet wide with two hundred foot turn radiuses. That's going to be a trick when they go past where Old Elk is, because I think there's a wetland there. But that's the aspiration and the intention expressed in the environmental impact statement. I was just on Hermosa Road yesterday and another thing came to mind. The technical reports that appear in the environmental impact statement observe that in the entire project footprint, there's never more than about forty inches of bedrock. Now, if you drive down Hermosa Road, you can do the same thing on Pumpkin Vine. You're not going to be able to do that hundred-foot wide road without some blasting. In fact, you're probably not going to be doing, able to do that without taking out all that nice new fencing that Old Elk has put in. There's, that's a big change for that area and they don't know what's coming. And what's going to go down those roads? Really, the only way you can get from I-80 to two eighty-seven, so the only way you can get to the portion of the project that's north of the railroad is by Hermosa Road because the railroad blocks it to the east. So you can't go on Virginia Dale or the, what's it, Dale Creek Road. You can't go on Pumpkin Vine because there's a narrow corrugated tube under the railroad. So if you got something big, you're going to have to go either from two eighty-seven or from I-80 to get north or south to anywhere of the twenty-nine turbines they have to serve, you're going to have to use Hermosa Road. I believe that because they have not yet come to terms with the railroad, they're not going to come to terms with the railroad on movement of the large turbine pieces. So that means that all those turbine pieces are going to have to come off of I-80. Another little hitch there is that there is no way that I-80 is currently configured that it can take that, that traffic off of it. So there's going to be all that traffic rolling right by Paul Montoya's Bed and Breakfast by that neighborhood that clusters around Ames Monument. Then what other traffic? Well, it turns out both cement plant batches, both cement batch plants are going to be on the south side of the railroad. That is, it's going to be one on Pumpkin Vine and one on Cherokee Park Road. The county engineer has said that for every turbine, there's going to need to be fifty-seven truckloads. That's a big hauler with a pup of cement. Now, if all that comes from either of those two batch plants, it's going to go up good old Hermosa Road over the rail crossing, going to run around Hermosa Road. Some of it's going to go south on Monument Road. Some of it's going to go down a service road that's scheduled to be on the spine between the two dranges. So basically between Monument over here and Hermosa Road here, there'll be a service road that goes south. That is a lot of heavy traffic and that's just the heavy stuff. That's not the truck traffic. That's not the guys driving to work. The question that I want to sort of come back to you with then is, and it's the end of my letter too, what are you prepared to do about that? The environmental impact statement says that there's going to be a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit in that area. Is that your speed limit? Or are we in Sherry Birchland where somebody posts a speed limit and it's catch as catch can? I mean, I think that if you're going to approve a project like this, you have to think in that direction. What are you going to do about blasting? You know, I and others asked you and the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider blasting regulations. The EIS says that what's going to happen is Connect Gen will enforce county blasting regulations. There's a little catch twenty-two for us that are worried about what blasting will do. Are you going to do anything about operating hours? Are the people that live in the vicinity of the Ames Monument going to have to put up with traffic of all shapes and sizes twenty-four, seven, for as long as construction goes on? I don't think that's reasonable. I don't think that the bath can say that because, I know the baths get up in arms about everybody worrying about the viewscape, but even they, I think, can't reasonably say that for the sake of putting up a wind farm, a lucrative proposition for them, for that sake, they get to make
Wrap it up.
Everybody's life a living hell. I think there are a lot of decisions that you have to think about under the mitigating authority you have about what you're going to do to protect people if you're actually going to go forward with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. And then there's a gentleman in a pink-ish shirt standing against the back wall under the clock. You'd be next.
Good evening, county commissioners. My name is Barb Smith. My husband and I have a home at one twenty-eight Monument Road. We have owned the property for twenty years. We purchased it because of the views, Vitavu, snowy, rocky, mountains and more. I am here to speak in opposition to the Rail Tie Wind Project. The property, the property we owned has been protected by covenants to protect viewscapes. When we ran our electrical power in two thousand and two, we were required to install underground power lines so as not to ruin the viewscape for others in the area. The Rail Tie project kind of makes this laughable. When the Bed and Breakfast was developed on the property next to ours, they were required to get a zoning variance which we signed off on. The variance included a requirement for minimal impact lighting. So their business lighting signs would not damage viewscapes and views of the night sky. The night sky being an attribute Wyoming tourism uses as a draw for visitors. We can already view the red blinking lights from the Cheyenne Roundhouse turbines from our house. Ames Monument is a dominant feature on our near horizon. We are a half mile away from the Ames Monument. It is Albany County's only site on the National Register of Historic Places and a tourist attraction. We watch many vehicles go to view it every day from our home. This project will greatly affect the appearance of the surroundings. Our house has many windows to take advantage of the viewscape. Ames Monument and Reed's Rock are part of our up-close viewscape. A giant industrial complex covering both the ground and sky is not appropriate in the area of Ames Monument. The first three goals for Connect Gen and the EIS have nothing to do with Rail Tie being a fabulous area for The first three goals for Connect Gen and the EIS have nothing to do with Rail Tie being a fabulous area for the turbines. It is about Connect Gen's ability to connect easily and inexpensively to an existing transmission line. Citizens in the city of Laramie need to be about one, need to be one mile from turbines. Why then it is, is it only 5.5 times the turbine height for those of us in the rest of the county? Significant concerns for me include the turbine noise, shadow flicker, inadequate fire suppression for those of us living nearby. Seems as if in this application, you are not concerned with the health, safety, and rights of those of us in the rural parts of the county. Connect Gen Rail Tie will ruin the views for the entire Vitavu, Tie Siding, and Laramie areas after we have gone to great lengths to protect the environment. We bought the land for the views. It certainly wasn't for the tropical weather, at least if you've not been up there in the wind and hail. How is it that others suddenly have rights to drastically change our views and destroy the area around Ames Monument? I live at the intersection of Monument Road and Hermosa. The 100-foot roads and the traffic are not realistic. There are gas valve stations at the next property lines, and I'm wondering if they've even checked if it's feasible to have 100-foot roads in this area. I oppose the Rail Tie project. This is not the right location for wind turbines in Albany County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Baer. I own 295 acres at the southeast corner of Hermosa Road and 287. There are no personal stories I can tell you. There are no facts that I can present to you that have not already been given to you numerous times. I do not envy your decision. You have a tremendously difficult decision to make. Ultimately, the decision you are going to make is by approving the project, you are going to irreparably degrade the quality of the life that these people that live in that area have every night when they go home. It will be unreparable. And you must decide if the greater good of the county is served by approving the project as compared to the harm you do to all of the people, to the environment, and to the biology of that region. I, again, do not envy your decision. I submit to you the fact that it would be with great trepidation that I would make a decision to degrade the quality of so many Albany County residents' lives every night when they go home. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. Can we get a microphone over to Mr. Chestnut? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baer. Well, I'd rather you didn't.
I've got one here. You can leave that there.
No, go ahead, please, Tim.
Thank you for having the hearing, and it's great to see all the people be involved in these projects. One of the things in my 20 years as a county commissioner that always bothered me is that people don't get involved. The rooms aren't this full. And I do envy the, your position, because I was there. I know it's hard, but you're elected to do that job. I have to start with disagreeing with Senator Nicholas that these people were not the first people there. I remember when the, when Dick Goodman subdivided that land, and it was Union Pacific land that he bought, the Union Pacific was there first. Dick Goodman owned a lot of this land. And then before that, the Bath Sisters and the ranchers that were out there were there long before any of this, or me or any of my family were here. So what, what the problem that I see you have is you have rules set up, and you have to follow those rules. And you get legal advice about those rules, and you get advice from the planning office, the planning commission, the planner, the experts in the rooms. And so I think your decision is, is to follow your rules. And unfortunately, when many of these people that I was involved with permitting their homes, there was little opposition to, in the meetings to it. But in my ear and in my phone, literally thousands of calls about those houses dotting up over Vitavu and Ames Monument and down in Hermosa and those. And so it was a slow impact. So it wasn't the huge impact this project's going to have. But the problem is, these people have to follow the rules that they have. And then unfortunately, for everyone that is in favor of this project, the fact of the matter is, in the time I was a commissioner, there were more than a dozen of these projects that came up through industrial siding. I negotiated for Albany County the impact money for industrial siding for the huge project that Ann Hughes is doing over in Carbon County. I negotiated 3% for Albany County out of the total project cost. That was more than 15 years ago. So what actually happened is I negotiated 3% of zero, because most of these projects don't go in. One project in the time that I was a county commissioner was completed, and that was the project North Rock River. So I understand your, what you're saying. And I really pray and hope that Albany County can have further wind projects, but it's, it, I don't want the people to think that anything that these people up here are going to do is, are taken personally against you. It's just you have to follow the rules. The rules are set forth. And if you don't follow the rules, you're going to get in a legal battle, and you're going to lose. And this project is going to be in a legal battle either way. So I hope you all appreciate both sides of the argument, and we can move forward and be friends and help Albany County grow and be better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chestnut. Dwayne, three minutes, please.
Dwayne Callen, retired professor at Science Education University of Wyoming. Almost 30 years there. My field was ecology and science, science education. I started this meeting at home tonight. I was number one on the list up there, and I gave up. So here I am.
Thanks for your persistence.
This, this project is about money. This project is about money, a fraction of it coming to this county, and a lot of it going to Houston. A corporation of individuals have never seen one of you people with your stories, where you planted your homes, where you, where you enjoy the ecology and you plan to live. It's interesting to me that I did workshops, 200 of them over those 30 years, out in Wyoming, and I got to know a whole lot of this state. I knew the roads than I do today. And we're getting ready with the support of the Sierra Club, one of the largest environmental organizations, to take a great big swath of land where all of you people live. And it's not right. Sierra Club is wrong on this. They are not supposed to be there. They're supposed to protect wilderness. And this is not wilderness. This is where you, people have your fine homes and your future. For the West Sierra Club, it's a, it's an international movement. They've got to get us off of fossil fuels, because it's the greatest, it's the greatest problem that our civilizations ever faced. The scientists know it, and they scream it to you. They scream it to you. But this is wrong for the Sierra Club to take your homes. Let me, let me suggest another place for it. You drive between Rock River and Douglas. You can drive through thousands of acres of public land out there. We were sitting there at Teltac Lake for five, for an hour, and we didn't see five cars. You go down 287, you can see 100 in an hour or more. And you call it, and that's where you want to put up these huge towers to say, welcome to Wyoming? I don't think so. There is so much of Wyoming that is appropriate, appropriate for wind farms. And we, we have good examples of them already. And by far, solar is so much more conservative of land. It takes many, many times more acres to, to build a wind farm of equal size to a, to one that is just a few acres of solar. Take a look out at Rock Springs. Take a look at that new solar farm out there. It doesn't take hardly any land relative from, from Sherman all the way over to Pumpkin Vine. That's a huge swath of land, and it doesn't belong, it doesn't belong to money in Houston. That's where it's going. Albany County gets a small, small piece of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callen. Jennifer, yeah, and then Ace. Following Jennifer Ace, thank you.
Should I go after short person? Jennifer Kirchhoff. And I just wanted to point out a fault in the transportation analysis technical report in regards to the transportation of the turbine comit, components from I-80 at Vitavu exit 329. This is kind of, I should have gone directly after Al Manir. This goes to a lot of his points that he was making as well. Specifically, in the transportation analysis report, it says it is assumed that project components being delivered along I-80 will travel north on I-25 between Colorado State Line and the I-80 interchange in Cheyenne, then west along I-80 to Vitavu exit 329, which provides access to the northeastern portion of the project area. The application also broadly describes some of its plans for use of public roads, including Monument Road will be utilized as a primary route for transportation of project components and construction equipment wind materials with the project area and may support some limited construction worker and OM traffic. I don't know about you guys, how often you go out that exit, but the off-ramp at the Vitavu Road I-80 heading west will not accommodate transportation of the blades and possibly other turbine components. Area is too small. There's cattle guards at each intersection that are narrow and surrounded by fencing and also surrounded by drainage ditches. That turn, turning left to go under the, the bridge is way too narrow. They would have to go under a bridge that is 14 foot, 5 inch clearance. If the transportation trucks can even make it under this bridge, it would be by mere inches. I'm pretty sure that the White Sox wouldn't be approving of that. The transportation analysis technical report assumes project component delivery will be from I-80. Not only is this is an uneducated assumption, considering the conditions of that exit. This exit is primary entrance for use for visitors and tourists to Vitavu. Blocking this exit with slow attempts to deliver hundreds of pieces of turbine parts during peak tourism season would be a logistical nightmare. The most logical assumption would have been to utilize the same route which the Roundhouse turbines used. This would mean slow travel down the canyon while backing up traffic for miles, which we've already experienced, to the Third Street exit in Laramie, where each part would then block traffic as trucks slowly maneuvered the turn under the bridge to get back on I-80, so it could then attempt the exit at Vitavu off-ramp from the other direction. But this route also has its own logistical nightmares. There are cattle guards on the off-ramp at Vitavu Road as well, as Monument Road as you exit Vitavu Road minimize turn, minimal turn radius allowance. Simply removing the cattle guards would then lead to necessity of navigating the drainage ditch on the inside of the first turn. After this first turn from the off-ramp, the transport vehicle would pretty much need to immediately make another left turn onto Monument Road. Again, navigating a narrow cattle guard and some fencing. One second. I would highly recommend that you consider why. With a project of this magnitude, you have been given reports with assumptions instead of facts, especially when the data is easily accessible by the general public, and assumptions are clearly illogical. This, in addition to the points brought up by others, including Al Manir, should cause you to question the validity of a large portion of information presented in the draft EIS, as well as from Tetra Tech and Connect Gen. There have also been many contradictions between these three, these reports brought to your attention, which should lead you to a denial of the Rail Tie application. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ace, please. This young lady with the dark hair, next to the gentleman in the cowboy hat. Thank you.
Money, money, money. Man, I've heard from a lot of greedy white people today. Going to make money on this wind thing. I'm here to call you out, Mr. Heber. I would like for you to refuse yourself.
Yes, please.
Hey, you and I are friends, and we were. Listen to me, listen to me. I've had enough of you maligning me. So, no. I have three- No, no, wait a second. I've heard this too many times.
Excuse me.
The second time.
Order, please.
Second time I've been muted.
Ace, this is a meeting about the Rail Tie, not about-
This is about the-
Propose conflicts of interest.
And he's on the regulation committee. He's making a ton of money.
Well, that's neither here nor there about the Rail Tie, if it's true or not. So please keep your promise to the Rail Tie.
He should be off the Rail Tie Committee.
But that is, that is, he's not for yours to decide.
You know that I shut off my sales operations six years ago when I became a commissioner? I've not sent a single postcard. I've never bought an ad, nothing. And do you know that I refuse to bid on that project because of the conflict of interest? You will not see honey wagon stuff out there, because I'm sitting in this seat. So I make a, I make a decision to do the work that I'm charged with in this seat that I'm elected to. Hey, shut up. I've had enough of it. Here's the deal. No, he's attacking my character. And so I shut off my, my sales operation six years ago. I have done zero sales. The only thing I can tell you.
Well, it continues with this call for recess.
For me, your son Gar-
We'll recess for the next 10 minutes.
He told me- How you had 70-
How you had seventy-four.
Can we take those conversations outside if you are having a conversation? Thank you. It's nine forty-five. I'd like to restart. Ms. McGuire, Mr. Smith, could you take that conversation outside, please? My apologies for what happened there. I think that ninety-nine percent felt strongly about what was happening, but behaved themselves. I think that's exactly how public comment goes wrong, right? And so we'll just continue. Would anybody like to speak? Yes.
Please, the lady in the slot, Burnett.
Thank you for listening. My name is Alf Hugrich. I'm a resident of the county. I actually, my home is right at the intersection of the Vito Voo interchange. And as Jennifer said, there is no way to bring the wind turbines through the interchange without a huge overhaul. My property and life would be impacted by semis turning and using jack brakes all hours of the day and night, disrupting our lives with burdensome noise and lights. There's no way to do an overhaul without making physical changes to the portion of my property that touches the intersection. I'm going to make myself very clear. I will never allow so much as one blade of grass or rock on my property to be touched by this project or any project. I'm also extremely concerned with the very real possibility of our well and groundwater being affected by the project. We saved our money for eight years to put in a well. Before that, we hauled water to our home. I'm sure you are aware that we live in Antarctica for what seems like eight months out of the year. So the thought that the rail tie project could ruin my well and I would have to haul water through six to eight foot snowdrifts again, and that Connect Gen wouldn't be held accountable is beyond distressing. We live in an incredibly unique area with Vito Voo, the views of the Rockies, the historic Ames Monument, the wildlife, and the vast history that us homeowners consistently have the pleasure of discovering. Why would we destroy the beauty, serenity, and the history of this area to send the power to another state? It's like a neighbor is throwing their garbage into our yard so they can reap the benefits of their yard staying beautiful and pristine while ours is being destroyed. My husband and I moved here because from the moment we stepped foot on our property, we knew this is where we were supposed to build our forever home. The land spoke to my soul. I knew this place was going to be my sanctuary, my safe haven, and my lifelong adventure. No one has the right to take that away from us. Please consider everything that is at stake. Please take the forty-five day deliberation period to understand the ramifications this project would have, not only on the land, but to the actual people, all of us who sit before you tonight. We are your neighbors and we deserve your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please. And then back in the very far back, you'll be after this gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be as brief as I can. I think I can do it within three minutes. My name is John Davis. My wife and I built a house at Fish Creek Ranch at two forty-four Elk Crossing Road in two thousand and five. Two of the three of you have been to my house, so it's not so abstract. You can imagine it. This hearing is about a permit application by Connect Gen that the commission and the public was told that would be submitted after the EIS was finalized. And then instead, when Commissioner Terry Jones was defeated and Commissioner Ibera replaced her, the commission contemplated further tightening the county wind regulations at the hearing at which the current version of the regs were approved in February. And then rather than face the uncertainty of incremental regulation, Connect Gen rushed in with the county permit application prior to the EIS approval or finalization. It was rushed and sketchy in parts, but it's been represented to you by your staff that it was complete, but I don't believe it is. The the permit sought here has great value to Connect Gen. Much as a residential real estate developer may acquire raw ground out in the country and get it zoned. Once it's zoned, it has more value than it was raw, and then they flip it. They don't actually put in streets, roads, and sewers and pipes. They just flip it for the value added that goes with the permit. And I represent that that may be what's going on here, and it's why the the application is so vague. The, if they do flip it to another developer or production company that knows nothing of any oral explanations or commitments that Connect Gen has made, then nobody's bound by it. And you've heard from Sherry Birch, the problem when things are vague. These permits need to be tight if they're going to be issued at all. As Al Manier pointed out, there are vast gaps in their application. I was working with Al and contacted the Union Pacific Railroad about whether there was a plan or a consent for connections collecting lines to cross the UP railroad and property to get to the interconnect substations. I received a reply from Nathan Anderson, Senior Director of Public Affairs for the Union Pacific in Wyoming, and he indicated that Union Pacific had not received an inquiry about the project. So he could not respond other than a general way. This application is not ready or complete. They show lines on the maps and drawings that cross non-participating properties where the property owners haven't consented to such crossings. And again, with Sherry Birch, the reason the road by her house ended up being heavily traveled was because the UP did not play ball on improving a crossing. So you should either deny this thing outright for a lack of completeness or delay consideration of it until it is ready for prime time. You know, and while this permit has great value to Connect Gen, it has detriment to people like me. My assessed value on the valuation statement from Grant Showaker went down by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars this last year. And Bill and Linda Biles' valuation went down and the neighbor up the hills went down. I mean, you may get a little tax money out of them, but you're losing tax base from those that were already there. It seems incredibly unfair to us because we bought and built in a platted subdivision that was consistent with the county's comprehensive plan and approved by the county. And to industrialize this area is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. But somehow, because cattle graze there now and could graze there after the turbines are built, it's not viewed as an industrialization. And that's, that's a fiction that is preposterous. I mean, I thought cows were only sacred in India.
Could you wrap it up, Mr. Davis, please?
Wind and solar are fine if they're cited correctly. This project is not cited correctly, and I urge you to deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And it looks like I have two online, so we'll go to online. We haven't been there in a while. Catherine Cotton, followed by Adam Nash. Catherine, three minutes. The floor is yours, please.
Hello, I'm Catherine Cotton, three one five Indian Springs Road, Albany County. I started buying property up there right out of college. I'm talking in the nineties. And I'm so fond of the area that there's a conservation easement on it. I'm also very proud of my own green technology at the cabin I hold there. I have the solar panels and I have a wind turbine. And so from personal experience, I can tell you, those wind turbines don't hold up. I have the same solar panel. It's been there for over twenty years. No problems other than occasional replacement of a battery. I now have a wind turbine that needs replaced for the third time. It's broken. The wind destroyed it again. And it's a significant cost to replace, and I'm going solar next time when we finally can get somebody to do it. My real reason for raising my hand, and I don't like to talk, so I'm cutting it short real quick here. I think we're all for green energy. Ultimately, we all benefit from it. But we need to do this the right way. My cabin is proof. There's a wrong way and there's a right way. It's puzzling that we want to use obsolete technology at such a grand scale when we have opportunity now to research and advance and use energy production technology that will have a lot less carbon footprint and have a net positive environmental effect while producing more kilowatts of energy than these obsolete ginormous turbines. I'm sorry, I try to ignore the the view shed issue, but it's a real one. And they will destroy the view shed. They will destroy hopes and dreams for many of us residents that love this environment. So a few others can feel good about themselves, and that's an attitude on my part. Apologies for that. But it can be better, and we have an obligation to do it the right way while we can before we regret it. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Mr. Nash.
Yeah, I I have a big problem with the way you're conducting your meeting because Mr. Honeywell over there has touched his phone and he has not written down a single note. And he is not conducting himself professionally at all. As of right now, he still keeps staring at his phone, refuses to look at anyone that is actually commenting. And all he's been doing this entire time, staring at his phone, not taking a note. And I would like to say it does look like honey wagon does have a vested.
Mr. Mr. Nash, please, rail tie. There is a mute.
I'm done. My problem is the way he's conducting himself.
Mute, please. Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman. We abide ourselves in these communities in this process through Robert's Rules of Orders or other types of rules. And the issue with respect to integrity of a commissioner has no place in fair debate. It defeats debate. It impairs debate and actually works opposite. The point of order is those arguments are out of line. If there was an issue with respect to of the one commissioner's conflict of interest, there's a method to to deal with that among the board. And it is the board itself is the only entity, the only parties that can challenge their own ethics and and conflicts of interest. In fact, there is a method for a commissioner to divulge his conflict of interest. He's required to do that. Under our rules of debate that we apply to all governmental entities in Wyoming, including county commissioners, we honor our commissioners' obligations to make disclosures. And that's where it ends. If there's a challenge beyond there, that challenge belongs to the commissioners. But there is no appropriate place for fair debate to challenge the integrity of a commissioner in debate. It stifles debate, and in fact, it impairs my side, which is opposed to this because it's likely to drive you to a position I don't think you want to be, that I want you to be. So my point of order is that that's unfair discussion. It's inappropriate for the debate, and it's already been raised, and as point of order, it should be shut down when it rises. Thank you. And I apologize to Commissioner Richardson for having to go through that. It wasn't fair. It wasn't appropriate, and it's wrong.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. I'm sure you've been in this position before, and there's no way to get a hundred percent compliance with that. So you do the best you can and shut it down when you can. Thank you so much. Yes. Thank you, sir. Thanks for your patience. I'm sorry. I skipped you to go online. Your name, please. Three minutes.
Yes, I will be less than three. My name is Rhett Epler. I've been following this for about eighteen months now. I think the commissioners, the planners and zoners, everybody in the government has done a good job of listening. I've been, every email I've sent has been responded to. Every phone call has been returned. That's from the commissioners, the planners and zoners. So I think at the end of the day, you guys are going to make the best decision you can. And the only thing I have to say really about that is we just, I think it would, for everybody, we implore you, what what information do you need to make this decision? Because you've asked for peer reviewed information. You've got it. You've asked for an EIS. You've got it. You've asked for an application. You've got it. I think Tim Chestnut was right. There are definitely rules to follow. And like every other part of life, we're bound by those rules, and that sometimes is very hard. Sometimes it's very easy. So I think you guys do have a hard decision to make. I think there are, it's probably fifty fifty in this room, people that are split for and against the wind project. And I do think that there's going to be definitely, perfect is the enemy of the good. So I think that, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. I think it's a good project. There are negative consequences. There's negative consequences to nearly everything. But like most things, you have to do a cost benefit analysis, kind of outweigh and kind of just weigh what is is really best for the community, and I think the wind project definitely is. And one final thing that has not been brought up at all is that this is not a dense project. This is a hundred and twenty-one wind turbines on twenty-six thousand acres of land. That is forty square miles. I've done the math at one point. I think that averages out to maybe one to two turbines per section, which is six hundred and forty acres. So that is definitely something to take into consideration. Huh?
Excuse me. Excuse me, please. Excuse me. Thank you goodness.
So that's really all I have. I think that I'm not going to say it. Thank you, guys, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Epler. There is a gentleman in the back, and then we'll go to you, the gentleman in the black mask, and then we'll come forward here.
Commissioners, thank you for having us here today. I grew up next to a bunch of wind turbines. None of them are on my parents' property. They're about a mile away. I don't hear them. The antelope and deer came right back after they got built. That didn't seem to be a problem. I do think. I do think it is a personal property right. I do not believe that there is a view shed property right. I do ask that you award the sorry, I'm losing the word there, but I think you go forward with this project. I believe it'll be good for the economy here in Laramie. I also ask that you do vote on it tonight. This is getting out of control as we are 18 months into this, and I think it's time for a vote.
Can I get your name, please, sir?
Danny Clingensmith.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you, sir. Three minutes.
My name's Chris Kelly. I have represented good corporate sponsored projects throughout this country for 40 years, my career. This, I'm going to address two things. There's a lot of really good reasons not to cite this project here. And I'm not in favor of it here. I am in favor of wind turbines. This is an extremely environmentally challenged area to put one in, and it just doesn't make sense to do it. So you heard all that, but there's two things. One's corporate sponsorship. I would, I would highly recommend that you guys really understand the finances behind this. John, my neighbor, I'm Fish Creek Ranch as well, discussed with you that this one smells like a developer, you know, flip, the way they used to do in the 80s. I've seen it a million times. And a really good corporate citizen doesn't sit there and go, oh, flicker. That's, that's an issue, but it's not a really issue for you. And then show up with flicker on adjacent properties in the process. They pull their windmills back. That's what a good corporate citizen does. A good corporate citizen looks at the citizens of this county as customers. That's not what you're getting here. I highly suspect that this is either going to get flipped or they're going to syndicate the equity. In both instances, the county loses because you're going to have either a new player or you're going to have a player with limited financial resources in order to get this done. You really need to figure this out. Two, if this is really the first wind project that they've done, where's the CEO? Where's the CFO? Why aren't they here? Why aren't they adding credibility to this? These are, these are good employees. They're employees. I used to be an employee. I didn't have the authority to do it. Where are the executives? This is their first project. This is a massive project. You've heard it over and over about the materials that are going to go through here, the impact on the community. Yet the executives are not here, the people that can really make commitments. I highly recommend that you guys get those guys in a room and make sure that it's really there and the finances are in check. Third, this project is already degrading your tax base. John mentioned that there was a reduction in our assessed value. Our, in Fish Creek Ranch, not in total, only in the front, only the houses that can actually see it. It's bifurcated. In the back, values went up because you can't see the windmills. Now, you're not going to get Grant to say it's a windmill issue. This is too polarizing right now. But I can guarantee you that's what it is, and you're creating liability in the process. So let me give you some numbers. Our property value from last year to this year went down 33%. The value now for our home is less than what it costs to originally build because of this project. Now, I asked Connect Gen about that, and they said, whoa. Long term, there isn't a value impact associated with this. There's a study. I didn't see the study. But I will tell you that I suspect what's happened is that study starts when the project begins and gets built and not when they started applying for it. As a result, what they're doing is saying, you know, long term, my value went up from a 33% reduction. Look really hard about the values. Third, you guys had two wins on windmills, which is awesome. You've got two of them going into your county. This is a bad one. You really, really, really need to make sure you understand how badly placed this project is. And the sponsorship, these are good people, I'm sure. But I'm pretty sure they have no authority here. And I'm pretty sure at the end of the day, what you're negotiating with is not what you're going to get in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Dow, and I live a few miles north of the proposed project. I've lived in Albany County for 23 years. And like a gentleman who talked before, I would not have moved here had the project been in existence at that time. I urge you to deny the permit because I think the application and the supporting documents, although they're very extensive, still do not adequately address the issues that are important to this community. For example, highway safety during the construction, there will obviously be a great deal of large truck traffic. And the documents that I've read for the application in E I S talk about levels of service that will not be produced that much. But I'm very concerned about vehicle collisions. I cannot imagine there will not be additional vehicle collisions with all these many trucks driving on all these roads. And I cannot imagine that there won't be at least one person who dies in one of those vehicle collisions. I would like to see some study that shows that no one will die because of that. And there is not that kind of detail in this application, the E I S or anything like that. Additionally, fire protection. I think it will take a very long time for one of the local fire departments to respond to this. And I don't understand how they will get large quantities of water to that site. I think there needs to be a more specific plan for quick response to fires. And the quickest response would be to install equipment in the cells themselves and extinguish that fire immediately. If that can't be done, there needs to be some way to very quickly respond and have water already there on site or some other way to get a large amount of water there quickly. This needs to be resolved before you approve a project like this. Also, the aircraft lighting system. I'm very skeptical that the proximity detection aircraft system is actually going to work. I think in part this is because this area is, there's a lot of air traffic. The Laramie Airport and even the Denver Airport, people fly to the north and come over our area. And if this lighting system is not going to work, this is the wrong place to put it. Also, birds, eagles. They do not propose to use state of the art technology to shut down the turbines when birds are in the area. And such technology is available. But all they want to do is locate the turbines away from eagles nests. I could say more, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Appreciate it. Here, and then we'll come up front to you guys. Mad Dog, please. Excuse me, Mr. Anderson. Yes. I'm sorry, I've known Mr. Anderson in a different life a few years ago, right? We were both younger. Sorry about that.
My name is Michael Annison, better known as Mad Dog. And I thank you for trying to listen to me. I'm trying not to get belligerent because with the earlier committee, I made a call out statement on somebody and I got my little butt slapped. Okay, I'm not calling out anybody. But all I'm going to say is you as county commissioners need to go out and vote on something. And I'm not sure if you're going to do it tonight or if you're going to postpone it. But we had other issues with the group that decided whether you guys were going to hear this. You know, your earlier committee that I spoke to, and I got my butt slapped for saying something on that. The company that you guys are talking about dealing with has lied to people, lied to our faces, lied to them. Now, they turn around and they change what they say, but they will lie right to your face. This is their only wind project. They might have other ones that they're might be saying they're doing. They might have this, they might have that. But they do not have a project. Young man back there mentioned something about you guys should sit down with them. Nobody was here. You guys have sat down with them and you guys have talked to them. So if you think they haven't talked to them, they have behind closed doors, a bunch. Okay, that's it. But the place where this is going to be taking place is not a place for wind turbines. My daughter's house is a fine example of it. She has one of those little stupid wind things out to measure the wind, right? These turbines are supposed to be great for high winds, right? Am I wrong? No, they're not great for high winds. She has 100 plus mile an hour winds at her house. Yeah, 100 plus. Have they said that they have that kind of winds out there? No. And it happens all the time. But they haven't said it happens all the time. Have they? No. So it's a bunch of stuff that I've been lied to. I'm sure you've been lied to behind closed doors. And I'm sorry that it comes to this, but you guys have to make the final decision. If somebody doesn't need to vote on this, they should not vote on this. But if they feel good and they should, then they should. And I'm going to leave it at that. And I appreciate your time and God bless America and hope you guys make the right choice.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. And Mr. Niss, we will get to you. I see your hand up. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to Tom Hamp. Just briefly, I wanted to point out a couple of things. Connect Gen made a point to say that they could reach out to mitigate some circumstances with A D L S lighting or with lighting, and that was through the A D L S lighting. Well, that's part of our regulations. Well over a year ago, we sat together as a group, as a community, to try to talk about this proposed project. The fact that we thought it was in a bad area. The fact that we knew that there's already two other projects that have been approved to the north. Those, those were appropriately cited because there was no opposition, as others have testified. So my thought here is you still have an opportunity to intervene. We didn't, we didn't intervene at the regulation side. But I believe the application is not sufficient for protecting the public in the manner that the public has voiced with respect to fire, with respect to blade, blade throw, with respect to ice throw, noise, and all of those things. And I, I believe that you have the ability to step forward and do the right thing and deny this permit and ask them to go back and negotiate some of these things. Clearly, clearly, it's not in the best interest of any of us to allow any of our citizens to have to sit and endure blade throw or flicker. What happened to Sherry Birch out there is what we should learn from. Our regulations don't take into consideration those things. And we haven't looked at those opportunities to make those corrections. I ask you to vote no to this application, send it back as incomplete and ask for further clarification for all of those issues that your constituents to the South have expressed for well over a year, a year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I had this young lady in the
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I think you all know me, but I'll introduce myself for the room. My name's Anne Brand. And my great grandfather read a book called Young Man Go West. He was working in New York City at the time, and he bought a one way train ticket. And he headed west and he spent the night at the Johnston Hotel, which is now Lovejoy's Restaurant. He borrowed $10 from the mayor of Laramie and he started a business, my business. I felt that it was time to give back, and so I started the Albany County Conservancy. I wanted to focus on ecology, wildlife preservation and historical heritage in the area. All of a sudden, people came to me with the same personal values that I have. We aligned. And now I have an active coalition of people focused on open spaces, ecology and wildlife preservation in the Laramie Valley. Now, while it's a shame that I'm here talking about those things under the conversation of rail tie wind, that is my focus. Just last week, a moose was hit crossing Highway 287 at my family homestead. I am from a family that has had a homestead when I only had a handful of neighbors on the Wyoming Colorado State Line. Now there are many people that live there. The animals, though, I can tell you, are still there. I have watched with my own eyes from barely three years old to now, thousands of elk pass through the area. Thousands of mule deer pass through the area, hundreds upon hundreds of pronghorn. I have seen with my own eyes animals that I consider to be wolves, although I'm not supposed to say that on the Colorado side. I've seen many species of greatest conservation need. People are reaching out to me from all over the country. People are reaching out to me who are concerned about biodiversity genocide. People are reaching out to me saying, look at success stories like Cape Wind. While Martha's Vineyard may have wind turbines, Cape Wind was a success. This is determined by Wyoming Game and Fish as crucial habitat right in the area of the proposed rail tie wind project. In the very least, I urge you to consider the consequences of rail tie wind and what it will have on Albany County's future and the future of our planet. Instead of allowing a Houston based oil and gas company to repackage itself as Connect Gen and make billions with only a small return to Albany County. It is not okay to approve an application that uses inaccurate, out of region data, specifically a study conducted in Oregon focused on avian and bat populations to attempt to give credibility and state that there will be minimal impact to wildlife. The reason it is not okay, to me, as a fourth generation Albany County resident and executive director of the Albany County Conservancy, is it is a complete failure of project knowledge and integrity. I'm a mother. I'm a business owner. I'm a fourth generation resident. My husband and I have raised our children here, and we have both contributed to the Laramie Valley economy for over 30 years. As well as over hundreds of Albany County residents who've raised educated and credible concerns regarding the rail tie wind project, concerns that need to be addressed. It is great concern that a company who will make billions is regarded as a credible source of information when the expertise of local knowledge in a university town has been completely disregarded in some areas.
Could you wrap it up, please?
I implore you to take the full 45 day period. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brand. One more here, and then we're going to go online to Mr. Niss. And I think, yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sue Dow, and I am a resident of Albany County. I'm also a Wyoming native. My great grandparents also homesteaded in Wyoming. So the reason that that is, adds to my talk this evening is because I've also had the opportunity to watch energy and many booms and busts in my long lifetime. The thing that I am most concerned about is that in that watching of energy, just in my lifetime, I've seen so much abandonment by energy companies, leaving it up to counties in our state to clean up their messes. We've tried to change that. We've tried to address it, and we're working on it. But we get left holding the bucket. I'm afraid that with the current regulations, we're in a similar position that we haven't considered many things that down the road as this technology develops and we watch other, this form of energy go into a bus cycle that we will be cleaning up. And I encourage you to look at the bonding, to look at the finances behind this, not from promises, but from actual financial data. And that we start considering how this could impact us for the next 30, 70 or more years. I think that everyone has said many things much more eloquently than I can with much more fact. Um, I think that everyone has said many things much more eloquently than I can with much more fact. I think that we've got technology out there that is being cited by Connect Gen, but they are saying they are not sure that they can get it. I, in other words, they said that they would, would apply for the lighting radar. But they don't know, do you all know, um, how that radar will work? Will those lights ever go off? I do not think so. We have too much air traffic. I also have an extreme concern with, for our county commissioners. How in the heck are you going to impose regulations on these folks? We just don't have the, once it's cited, once you have given that power to them to develop this site, then it's out of your hands and we're going to have Sherries all over again. And there's going to be many more of them. I worry that Connect Gen has, um, also stated that, or I think in the application process, it states that there will be monitoring and, um, being sure that the regulations are, that the contract is adhered to, but the person, the company that will be doing that will be paid for by Connect Gen. And I think there's a definite conflict of interest there. That's all I have. Thank you. I'm opposed to the project, obviously. Thank you for staying for the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Dow. Mr. Niss, um, I have you and then we'll go to Nancy Bath.
No.
Three minutes, Mr. Niss. Thank you.
Hey, sound check. Can you hear me okay?
Got you loud and clear this time.
Oh, good. Well, good late evening. I'm in Gossar, Commissioner Rivera and Commissioner Richardson. Uh, my name is Kelvin Niss and I'm a recently retired businessman in a long time Laramie resident. I'm here tonight to speak, like many, in favor of the rail tie wind project and approval of the Connect Gen application. I've been in the environmental consulting industry, supporting the oil and gas sector and knowing all the problems associated with oil and gas and doing the environmental cleanup for over 30-plus years. Not that I am opposed to fossil fuels, however, clearly our energy future for our generation and generations to come is alternative energy. When I look at wind power in Albany County, being a professional, being in this industry for three decades, it is the most efficient technology to produce energy in a safe and environmentally sustainable manner. Really, wind energy creates zero emissions. It is basically a, a competitive that creates a tax revenue and employment opportunity. And when I look at this project and without rose-colored glasses and I see this rail tie project to fall in the lap of Albany County, it's just, it's, it's incredible. As, as somebody earlier tonight, I think one of the first speakers that I heard said, this is a project of a generation with a tax revenue base that creates opportunity and employment. And, you know, I, I think as we've all talked about, and there's sure many more experts than me about, you know, the county and, and the county finances, I see this as a no-brainer. Um, you know, I, I do understand that there are a few, you know, negative people impacted by this project. However, for the greater good of the county, the greater good of the county that benefits so many more, you really got to wrap this project up and, and approve this for the citizens of Albany County. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Niss. Um, Ms. Bath, three minutes, please.
Can you hear me now?
I have you. Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you for all of the time that you have spent on this project. I know it is a difficult decision. Um, we appreciate your efforts. I only have a couple of comments because I'm quite sure that you know where I stand. I would like to say that probably the real issue began when all the subdivisions sprang up around the county and particularly the ones that were less than 40 acres, the, um, the lots. And that's contributed a lot to the problem. But I would like to, um, tell everyone that you're welcome for the view that we have provided for all of these years. I hope you've enjoyed it. Unfortunately, you assumed you own it and that's not the case. And so to deny this would actually be taking of our private property rights. And, um, I realize it's not going to be a perfect project, but I think it will definitely benefit the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bath. Um, anybody here? And then Mitch, thank you. Yes, here.
County Commissioners, um, my name is Mariah White. So while studying for the MCAT, um, I read that having narcolepsy was like sleeping, being sleep deprived for 48 hours every single day. I have narcolepsy. When I read those words, I thought finally someone validated how I feel all the time. I struggle to stop sleep from controlling my day. The symptom that Sherry Birch just described to you, Commissioners, of being awakened and alert in the middle of the night is exactly what I experience every night. I suffer greatly from lack of good sleep. Sleep deprivation, similar to what I experience, has been documented by many families across the country and across the world who live near wind turbines. So please do not subject your residents to man-made symptoms similar to mine. The wind industry has long maintained that living in close proximity to wind turbines doesn't affect human health. When I spoke to Terry Jones about this issue last year, she asked me why people in Wyoming haven't complained about health problems increasing as a result of living close to wind turbines. At the time, I was new to this controversy, so unfortunately I did not have a good answer. I do today. The people most affected, those who are the leaseholders, are not allowed to talk about it. Written in every single wind lease across the country is a gag order stating that they are not allowed to say a single negative comment about anything related to turbines. So when the ranchers, like the Bath Sisters, say that rail tie will save their ranch from subdivision, I wonder at what cost? At what cost of their own health? At what cost of the health of their neighbors who get no compensation and don't have any way to sue the wind developer because wind developers didn't break any laws, which is exactly what Sherry Birch found. I plead with you Commissioners to not approve this application permit because there are hundreds of residents who could suffer as I do every day. People and wind turbines do not mix. If this wind project was located in northern Albany County, like many properly placed projects are, then the health effects would not bother almost any people. Terry Jones, that's why the people of Wyoming haven't complained up until this proposal. There are few people to oppose a properly cited wind project. I ask you to be cautious about approving this project, which means rejecting it for now to wait and see how the people of Rawlins' overall health is after a few years of choke cherry and Sierra Madre up and running. Test my assertions. Please don't make guinea pigs out of my family and my neighbors. Carefully watch other counties as they develop their wind industry much more rapidly than Albany County. There will always be sources of income from a wind developer here and there. You have two that will go online and generate needed funds much earlier than rail tie and affect much less than a dozen residents. Please review Rod Brann's report to WAPA, which he gave to you also, which proves that the World Health Organization is concerned about sleep disturbances associated with decibel ranges between 32 and 42. Note that this is much less than Albany County's noise regulation of 55 decibels. Of the 41 turbines that are going to break with the cert current site plan, this project has too many potential risks to the welfare of the citizens to be approved. So please deny this application.
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. Edwards, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mitch Edwards. I'm with the law firm of Nicholas and Tangeman here in Laramie, Wyoming, and we represent approximately 60 to 70 landowners in southern Albany County who are opposed to this project. I initially intended to address the commission tonight about conditional uses because it addresses Ms. Bath's assertion that she has a right to develop her property for wind. That is incorrect. Wind development is a conditional use in agricultural zoning, meaning that it is a privilege, not a right. There is no inherent right to a conditional use. But what is a right is all the people that have a residential property that surrounds and is adjacent to this property, for them to continue to enjoy their residential property. But what I really want to address to you is not the fact that Connection hasn't complied with our regulations and applied for a conditional use permit and obtained that conditional use permit to be allowed to even talk to you about citing wind on this property, but what the regulations and rules require with respect to this body's duty in considering this application. Because it's not about a cost benefit analysis. It's not about what tax revenue you might bring in. It's about the law and the rules that Connection is required to follow and what you're required to find. The wind regulations require that you, the county commissioners, in order to give final approval of the WEX permit, the Board of County Commissioners must be able to make required findings of fact and conclusions of law determining that each impact shall be mitigated. If deemed necessary, ensuring compatibility with adjacent uses. You're also required to find that the WEX project will not adversely affect the public health.
Get off your phone, honey wagon.
It's a good thing he knows what I'm doing on my phone.
Will not affect.
Some people like pen and paper.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Sorry about that.
It's okay. The WEX project will not adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare of the community. In discussing a conditional use permit application process, the Wyoming Supreme Court in 2005 recognized the importance of the process. And they stated this. "The general purpose of zoning is to quote, conserve and promote the public health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the county. Surely, the best evidence of the effect of particular action upon the citizenry is input from those citizens affected thereby. Furthermore, protection of the property values and preservation of the neighborhood character are proper factors for consideration in zoning decisions." Tonight and throughout this public comment period, we have heard numerous impacts from the citizens. And what you are required to find is not a cost benefit analysis or that you with the county will receive some tax revenue, but you are required to find that each impact is being mitigated. And you are required to find that this use is compatible with the adjacent rural residential uses. And your own regulations prohibit these types of developments in rural residential properties because they are incompatible. This project is surrounded on all sides by property that this commission and this county has zoned, permitted and allowed to be developed as rural residential. You cannot make the findings you are required to make for the Connection permit in this location and we ask that you deny the permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. I saw a hand back up here in the general vicinity. Okay. Um, anybody else have a public comment? Online, it looks like, uh... Sure, come on up, please. And then, uh, Mark, uh, online, I will go to you next. Thank you, after this young gentleman.
Hello. Um, I would like to start off by thanking Ms. Cox for writing a script for the entire basketball team tonight. It's pretty good. Except the problem is none of those girls have ever driven down any of our roads. But Kimber and I, we do in fact live out there. We're tired of speaking and Connect Gen getting the last word. Please don't allow Connect Gen the last word tonight. Amanda McDonald, she's already spoken. Do not allow her to close this meeting and minimize our voices. This is Albany County's meeting, not Connect Gen's. They are allowed to, they were allowed to submit what they wanted to say in their inadequate application. It's our turn. All right.
Thank you, sir. Can I get your, uh, name, please?
Gabriel.
Gabriel, last name?
Wrestler.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Mr. Isley, um, I thought I saw your hand up. The floor is yours. Three minutes, please.
There, how's that? Can you get me?
Got you loud and clear.
Okay, very good. Uh, my name is Mark Isley. I'm a, uh, cattle rancher. I have lived along and, and worked along the I-80 corridor for better than 60 years since I was a little boy. I have operations in Albany County. I run livestock up there in Albany County. And I have a completely different perspective because I do live and work around the turbine field down by Eastern Cheyenne, or excuse me, Western Cheyenne, where our headquarters are located on the east end of our ranch. I'm a UW graduate and an engineering student. I understand the, the technical end. I have three kids and their spouses that all went to UW. We have no problem with our cattle or the wildlife. Our cattle love the wind farm. They, it's a city's project that started, it did come over onto us. It was a huge benefit because I brought two of my kids back. We spent all of our money locally. We roll over three to five times in that economy. It's huge. Our cattle get behind those turbines and the wind. They lay it in, in the shadow during the summer. We have more wildlife, more elk, more deer and more antelope than we have ever had before. I think the residential areas and the subdivisions are pushing them down to us and they find refuge in them. As far as birds and raptors, my predecessor, Ann King, was a world-class bird watcher. She was a counter for Audubon Society and game and fish department. In 13 years, she counted one bird strike and a kill. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service confirmed that. Now, we're not in a bat migratory spode, but she took that very seriously. A couple of our turbines were repositioned to account for nesting and we've had no more kills since. One of my big criteria is for reclamation and the reclamation has been done. I won't tolerate anything else. These guys have come in and it has been up to par, it's been up to my spec and I have been on-site constantly. There's no water use, no local water use. It does not use water. It does not affect, I have a threatened water table with the ranch and the city Cheyenne's well field. I have no problem with my water. I have problems with the water from the U.S. Department of Defense when they contaminate the well sites up there south of Granite Canyon. That's taken 50 years. They're never going to be resolution to that. My family, two of my family members work for the county. They have seen the improvement in county services to service residential areas from this income. We've only had 40-foot wide roads when it was completed. Uh, the YDOT oversaw the ingress and egress for that equipment to go on and off-site. Those property taxes helped with things elsewhere in the county. But as far as snow removal for, for us, they actually came through and removed that snow. They have a contractor that does that. It's a cost that doesn't cost the county. You know, no one really owns the view shed. I think homes in those areas are hideous, but I respect it. Everybody has a private, a property right and that's what makes America different than every other country in this, in the, in the world. But I respect it. Everybody has a property right, and that's what makes America different than every other country in this, in the, in the world. And if someone has a property that they want to develop like this, and they follow the rules, they follow the regs, and I helped develop those rules and regs in Laramie County for safety, citing, we're five, six miles from the airport. I, I get all that. And we were there, lay downs. My kids are working underneath this thing. I'm working underneath this thing. I've got a grandchild who's underneath this, and we have no problems. And so I think a lot of it's conjured up. There are folks that do have legitimate health problems. I understand that. I believe that, and they're probably some mitigating circumstances. But these folks have told us straight up what they're going to do. They have followed through. And as far as reclamation on turbines and blades, Casper wanted those blades because they were going bankrupt, and that money that came in helped. There's also companies developed a reclamation for those blades. They're able to reclaim over ninety percent of those blades now and reuse it and recycle it.
Mr. Isley, could you wrap it up, please?
That's it. That's pretty much all I had to say tonight. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I appreciated your time. Big deal, big decision. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Isley. Any- Yeah, we're just going to do one. Mr. Anianson, it's late. It's ten forty-five, and we don't have time to go around the horn again, but- Okay. It's noted. That's, that's noted by this Commission. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to give you our ideas tonight. We appreciate your time. My name is Ruth Summers, and my husband and I have a place at twenty-seven Beaver Trail. We've had about twenty-five years. And what I wanted to raise with you tonight was the concern over the great deal of information that we don't know about the project. I did read all one thousand three hundred and seventy pages of the application and the EIS and the technical reports and found that, in my opinion, being a layperson, there's a lot I couldn't figure out about the county application and the EIS. One of the more glaring omissions to me in the application and the EIS was that there were no physical studies of the project's underlying geology had been done. What was presented was a desktop review of existing data and literature and a regurgitation of soil studies performed a decade ago for Hermosa Project only on the west side of the Highway two eighty-seven. Even the authors of those old studies warned that Sherman Granite Bedrock anticipated for the east side would be significantly different from the west, presenting difficult excavation. Geotechnical studies have not been conducted precisely for the area that might require more intensive excavation methods, such as blasting or de-watering. Depth and strength of the subsurface soil structures on the east side have not been done. A water supply and yield analysis has not been done, and erodibility study not done. Soils on the west side have not been reanalyzed for the support of bigger, heavier turbines. Totally neglected in the county application was any mention of possible de-watering for turbine pad construction. The proposed project area sits atop the Casper aquifer, and while it's not part of Laramie's aquifer production zone, it is only a few miles south and on a portion of the aquifer mapped as essentially being at the surface. Most wells here have a static water depth of zero to ten feet. The aquifer is highly vulnerable to contamination, which was noted in the EIS. The technical report included with the EIS does anticipate both blasting and de-watering for the excavation of turbine foundations, particularly those located in the northeastern portion of the siting corridor, again, precisely where no technical or water supply yield analysis have been done. Estimated water use for the project included only water needed for concrete batch plants, dust suppression, and operation maintenance building. It did not include or even mention estimates of aquifer withdrawal from de-watering. Presumably, it is an unknown, as Engineer Coffey testified to earlier. But I am concerned that it's not just one site that's going to be de-watered. It may be fifty. We don't know. One, a hundred? We don't know how many require blasting. We don't know if it's a one-time event or has to be done continuously. We don't know how much water will be needed to withdraw from the aquifer. But we do know the aquifer is recharged only through precipitation, and that without sufficient recharge, significant withdrawals from the aquifer are unsustainable. Since you are charged with making an informed and defensible decision assuring the project impact are identified and mitigated and that projects would not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of your community, please deny the application now and ask the applicant to come back. Reapply after doing the due diligence necessary to fully understand the project's potential impacts on the county's resources and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Mr. O'Toole, I see your hands up. You have three minutes. Floor is yours.
Okay. Am I audible?
Can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Patrick O'Toole. I've lived in Albany County just about continuously since my parents brought me here when I was two years old. For reference, I am now in my thirties. It seems that a large number of the objections to this project seem to be aesthetic. Not all of them, but some. In my view, this debate should not be about aesthetics. There may have been a time decades ago when we had the luxury of being able to consider weighing environmental considerations versus pure aesthetics. But as a millennial, I personally do not have the luxury of knowing that I will die before climate change's worst effects will enter full swing. I understand it is not a comfortable or easy decision for any of you, but I believe that this is a bet worth taking in the affirmative. We cannot continue to burn oil and coal for the next fifty to one hundred years. We cannot, as a county and as a state, signal that we are opposed to wind energy and that firms like Connect Gen are simply not welcome here. We've heard objections tonight that Connect Gen is here to make money. However, no infrastructure project has ever set out to make a loss in good faith. We've heard a lot about the Ames Monument tonight, and it turns out that the Ameses were also business people. Oak Ames and Oliver Ames Jr. were not immaculate saints. They were business people, just like the people of Connect Gen, on whom we are, of course, potentially rolling the dice, but there is no reward without risk. I believe that the objections to this project on the basis of environmentalism are disingenuous. The big picture here is that the impacts of climate change far outweigh any considerations about the gestalt of the landscape. That's not to say that I want the landscape to be ruined. As a matter of fact, my father and I have collectively donated about ten thousand dollars to Pilot Hill Project. According to the findings of APALA et al. in the International Journal of Sustainable Manufacturing, we have an ROI on environmental impacts of manufacturing and erecting wind turbines in about six to eight months. That is a fast turnaround. The claim that erecting a wind turbine represents net environmental damage is a canard. We've also heard comments about the maintainability of solar panels as opposed to wind turbines, but compared to solar panels, wind turbines release less CO2 into the atmosphere, consume less energy, and produce more energy overall. A single large wind turbine can generate the same amount of electricity as about forty-eight thousand seven hundred and four solar panels, depending on location. Lastly, on fire, according to the CWIF, an admittedly anti-wind power organization, they recorded a total of zero people killed between nineteen ninety-five and twenty-twelve on account of wind turbine fires. The chances of a fire on any scale for a given turbine in one year is approximately one in twenty thousand, which is a little less than half a percent by my math. Commissioners, you are familiar with these risks. You have read all of the documentation. And with the measures that Connect Gen has in place to address these, perhaps Ms. McDonald or some of her colleagues can speak to the issues, the sort of technical issues, if that's of interest. If we want another mullin' fire every year, I say we reject this project. If we want to increase the drought conditions that increase costs for regular people, increase fire conditions, and increase the occurrence of cheat grass, et cetera, we should reject this project. And if we want Albany County to remain the poorest county in the state, I would say that we should reject this project. Thanks very much for your time, and I will yield my time to the floor. Appreciate it. Thanks, folks. Thanks for staying up.
Thank you, Mr. O'Toole. That's the last comment I see online. Is there any more comments in person? Please, no. My hand's cramping. Okay. Commissioners, you have before you forty-four present for consideration the Rail Tie Wind Project, W E C S dash zero one dash two one. What is your pleasure? Remember, there, the decision can happen today. The decision can happen next week. The decision can happen, but must be happening in forty-five days. What is your pleasure?
I personally am not ready to make a decision tonight, and I apologize to those people who might have been expecting one tonight. I haven't been on board for a year and a half, as some of you have, so I would like you to indulge me and allow me a little bit more time. I know there have been a handful of people who have asked us to use at least thirty, if not the entire forty-five days, and I would really like to look over all my notes tonight, everything I've gotten from so many people on both sides of this, and give this a really good look. I also have questions that I would like to make of Connect Gen. They don't have to be tonight. I can call and get that information from Amanda and her team. But I am not ready to make a decision tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbera. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, I, I think that it's late enough that I, you know, I think everybody's pretty cooked. I would like to say to each of you who are my constituents that I haven't printed a business card in seven years. I have never approached anyone who has been in front of the Commission to do business with them. This job has cost me a great deal more than I've ever made from it. And this is, it's, it's a tough job, and I'm a really chill, kind of fun person. And I apologize for my outburst. I have a button, and that is when someone attacks my integrity. My wife is sitting back there, and she knows the cost. She knows the cost. So whether you like my decision or not, please don't doubt my integrity.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. I too agree. The hour is late, and we have forty-five days. So I do have one housekeeping. I think we do need to close the public hearing, so I will need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. I would like, however, to say thank you. There were five hours of testimony and just a few inappropriate testimonies. I know this issue raises passions in many people on both sides. And so I want to thank you for proving that we can have passionate discussions but still maintain our dignity and respect for one another. However this decision goes, we'll all have to live next to each other for the foreseeable future. And I hope we'll always remember that, that those who are on the winning side, whatever side that is, will have grace and compassion for those who are on, on that side. And we'll understand that they are, and always will be, their fellow citizens. So thank you for your time. Thank you for indulging us tonight, and I hope you have a pleasant tomorrow and a safe drive home. Thank you. Mr. Jennifer. I suspect we'll be on an agenda, right? We'll find those, that, those issues on an agenda item coming up. We have forty-five days, so that's three or four agendas. So, okay. You bet.